We have no one to authorize electronic participation.
Actually, it's not on this agenda.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
It's all free.
Yeah.
Deleted.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Warner, you have a motion to amend the agenda.
A motion to amend the agenda to move the discussion of the 3.01 to the business meeting under information.
Just under information.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Can we have a discussion on that?
Just a quick clarification, you'd actually move it to your action agenda because you do not have an information.
Well, actions for information.
But even if your action is just to receive information.
And have discussion.
Yeah.
That's what I said. Yeah.
Why can't we have discussion in here?
I'm juggling about eighty things right now. My brain's gonna explode.
I'd like to have a discussion of that motion before we vote on it.
Okay. I mean.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Absolutely.
Sorry.
I don't understand why we're not having the discussion here. I mean, if you want to amend the other agenda to add it to the agenda, it seems the appropriate time to do that would be when we approve the other agenda. But there's no reason not to have this discussion here because we have not discussed this at all.
Okay.
What is the objection to leaving it on here for discussion?
I just, I thought we had all discussed it. I mean, you've talked about it to, I mean, we've all.
We have not discussed it as a board. I've been approached with it as a possibility and, you know, my response was this needs to come to the board. We need to have a board discussion. If we move it forward, we're going to need to have the public input on it. And it seems that it's premature to even talk about putting it on the other agenda until we have the discussion here. If we have the discussion here and we decide we want to move forward with it, then we can talk about putting it on the other agenda. But I want to make sure the public has plenty of notice when it is on our agenda, you know, for any, either information or action.
Well, it first was brought to the board months ago, so I thought all members of the board had then made a brush for the situation and that this was for.
It was brought to three on three or the whole board?
It was, it was at one of the three on threes.
I thought it was three on three. But that's not bringing it to the board for action. And when it came to us, I, at least I had a conversation with a member of the Board of Supervisors in which I said that we're going to need more information before we can even, you know, consider this item, which is specifically, you know, where it's going to be, you know, what the intent is, you know, what the parameters are, that it was just a general discussion at that point. But it has never, to my recollection, been before this board for anything.
So are we now having a policy where everything comes to work sessions first, then comes to our board meeting for information the next month, then comes for action the following month?
No, we don't have a policy.
Well.
But this is already said. Why is it being brought up here as opposed to when this came out live that we have, you know, a discussion with the chair about moving it versus?
I actually did hear a discussion with the chair.
About putting it on and taking it off the discussion?
I didn't realize it was on this session because I haven't had a chance to look at these agendas until this morning. So I didn't realize it was on the work session agenda because I expected to see it on the business meeting agenda because it's just for information.
Right.
Which means that we can discuss information, we can have an open discussion about it, the public can be informed, and then we'll bring it back for a vote next month. Which is generally the way that we've always done things. So I'm just a little surprised, but whatever Ms. Healy wants.
No, I don't agree with that though because we, I mean, we've already have Hampton Oaks residents invited to the 7:00 PM meeting and they know this is a topic of discussion. So I think to have it here and not at the 7:00 PM meeting just asks us to open up more issues about transparency and making common sense. So, I mean, you can discuss it here, but we should discuss it out there too because they're not here. They weren't invited to 5:00 PM. They're invited to 7:00. So we definitely should have it.
I'm not saying we take it off there. My objection is to taking it off here.
Okay, let's discuss it.
I don't see why we would not have this preliminary discussion. I would prefer to have a preliminary discussion by the board members so that we at least are aware, we get a chance to ask our questions, know what we're talking about before we can respond.
So are we talking about we will have it on this agenda and then we will amend the agenda on 7:00?
We don't have to amend the agenda because it's on there, right?
I don't think it's on there.
It's not.
It's supposed to be. I thought it was.
I thought it was.
That's what I thought it was. See, I thought it was going to be.
And the board can easily add it.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, let's add it.
Yeah, I think I agree with Maya. I wouldn't want it to not be then at the 7:00 because that's the expectation.
I'm not talking about this on an agenda because all we're doing is approving the 5 o'clock agenda. That's all we're dealing with right here and right now is the 5 o'clock agenda.
That's yours.
So we're gonna withdraw and then we'll just do a vote? Okay, and we'll go to you to amend the 7:00?
Well, then the 7:00.
Okay, so motion to approve the agenda at 7:00.
I'll second that one too. You're just very amenable to me.
I really am. Tonight, I'm just feeling the love.
You love the dogs. Come on.
All in favor of approving the agenda?
The motive just went right through, didn't it? Just went right through.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so moving forward, 2.01, school proffers update.
All right, good evening.
Hi.
So this is a board request to receive an update on the proffers prior to our 7 on 7 meeting that we'll have with Board Supervisors in the coming weeks. We'll have a couple of meetings, but CIP will be one of the topics on those meetings. So first, I'll just claim I am not the expert on proffers. I am taking that county information and regurgitating it for you with the intent of if this generates questions, I can try to get those answered. But you have an attachment that has the detailed kind of proffers by district and by development. And this is just a kind of a summary of what's currently available to be collected and expanded, what's programmed into the CIP and then what's available in future years. So it's five, greater than five years out. So if it's greater than five years out, they do not program it into the CIP yet. And just a note that proffers are to be used in the election district of a project. That's the county's policy, and it must be used to expand capacity.
But it has to be permanent structures, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And is it also, is it like a, if it's to be used in that magisterial district, is it with approval of the board or just the person in that magisterial district?
My understanding, it would have to be the whole board. I don't think one board member can.
Declare how it's to be used?
Correct.
Chris, is it the magisterial district or the schools?
For drop.
The magisterial.
Appreciate the drops.
You know, it's like, say it's for a particular subdivision. Is it for the schools where that subdivision is assigned?
Correct. Generally, that's how it's been.
So that means we not all have to be used for.
Right, right, very clear. Right, right. And when it says a signed project and there is nothing?
On the detailed, on the detailed listing?
Yeah, yeah.
There might not be a project in the CIP in that area within the five years of this.
Okay.
Can I ask what the timeline usually is for future available? Because I see some neighborhoods in here that I feel like are institutions in Stafford County, but it still says there's future money coming. So how future are we futuring?
So again, it speaks to specific projects, but generally speaking, so a project could be on the books or maybe it's halfway done, but some of the proffers aren't collected until a certain portion of the project is completed. So as it reaches certain milestones, that triggers delivery of proffers.
Can I ask, so in Garrisonville, it says Embry Mill, $2.5 million is currently available.
Yes, ma'am.
So what does that mean? If, whenever, 1920, could that money be used to help pay for that construction project?
Yes.
Okay, and do we have $2.5 million available in Acquah?
I don't see Acquah.
I see Acquah here, $50,000.
Where you at?
Yeah.
Not by schools, right?
Yeah, by.
Well, it says by schools.
By schools, yeah, okay.
At the header.
Yeah, but I'm not seeing Acquah.
The header says by schools.
Oh, I see. That's by transportation though.
Oh.
Yeah, that's by transportation.
Yep, you're right, right, okay.
Yes, there's only two pages that are actually education. I think it's eight and nine or nine, well, there's not page numbers on here, I'm sorry, but about eight pages back, it was just a kind of a front and back of education.
But to Dr. Chase's point, there is cash available in that zone. And by magisterial district, you do have some cash proffers that are still available for school use.
So as I understand future available, what is it contingent upon? That would be actual building complete, like if it's Westlake, then I would imagine it's completion of the houses, every house in Westlake.
It depends on the covenants of the, of the proffer, but typically it is what, what you just said is that it's contingent on project completion, but also authorization, authority granted by the Board of Supervisors.
And so to assume there's no cost for inflation adjustment on the proffer itself. So the money that we have today, if it takes Westlake ten years.
It doesn't age well.
It's money value. So technically, we have almost $3 million anticipated for almost three and a half million, over three and a half million for Embry Mill.
So.
Two high schools.
When it says $650,000 must be set aside for North Stafford High School improvements, does that mean it has not been, there's been zero allocated for all of the CR projects that we've done at North?
So because those CR projects wouldn't have exchanged capacity at North Stafford?
Okay.
How do we use the proffer money for?
For fields, yeah.
For Stafford and, was it Stafford and?
Yeah, so that would have been an interpretation on the county side.
So it may have depended on the covenants of the proffer that was used, which may have had more allowable uses than some of the other proffers, which may have more restricted covenants.
That was not our request. That was the supervisor's decision.
And that would all be something that would be decided at the county level anyway. Other than being made aware of the available cash and requesting it, that's kind of where our lane is. In terms of their authorization and their interpretation of the covenants, that's where their lane begins.
Can, are the covenants, I know everything is public record, but are they easily searchable or are they only available via FOIA?
I don't know if they're easily searchable. I'm sure.
Well, I just know that like some things, there's like a spreadsheet that we can look at and it might not be easy to navigate, but at least it's there and we can.
You're gonna look at a document, you know, that's gonna be substantial, but it's, it's fine. You just have to decide which one you want to focus in on. And obviously, some are gonna be more germane than others. I'm not sure that it, it would be worth county staff time, really school staff time to research the, you know, far western Rock Hill random proffer versus something a little bit more germane.
More specific ones, like 59% of Colonial Forge High School Performing Arts or JROTC and/or, that's like incredibly specific use and.
But the proffers were negotiated with this Board of Supervisors.
Yeah, or whichever one.
At the time, they actually stayed.
So we're never actually.
I thought this was, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
No.
No. For that, that's perfect sense.
Absolutely. They should definitely know exactly what.
We don't understand what we're looking at. Which one did we vote on? Embry Mill site one or two? We're just getting them confused.
Yeah, so if we're ready, then I'll, because those are just the cash proffers.
This is the money. This is the land.
Can I ask her a quick question though? Here, it says George Washington Cherryview Landing, 1.2 million programmed into the CIP for elementary school 18. So is that being used for elementary school 18?
Based on this, that's how it appears, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Don't we have to request? Don't we request it?
Well, the county may have earmarked some of the funds and committed some of the funds independent. So again, they're, they're kind of like your bank in, in the context of they're going to source the funds from different locations. Some are going to be debt financed, some are going to be proffers, some are going to be from whatever sources.
So I need to ask that.
Now, I will say, and I think that this is an important point, it does not obligate you to district a certain way.
That's what I was gonna ask you because I saw that, I see Hartwood, Rocky, Ron, a bunch of, 2 million is slated for high school number six.
And so, and so think about it this way in terms of covenant benefits. The covenants may be structured in a way where that development or that area that has a cash proffer associated with it still benefits from reduced capacity in one place.
Right.
And so there's still a benefit gained as a result of the proffer and as a result of the covenants of the proffer, even though the direct money may be going to a project that does not directly support that.
So, so does that mean Embry Mill money could be used on elementary school 19 if it's at, if it's at Brookpoint?
It's a good question.
I think potentially it is a good question.
I mean, because if we're using money from, if we're using money from the George Washington district for a project that's in the Hartwood district, I'm just curious.
Raymond, clarify my confusion then. We're not the ones assigned, you just said the Board of Supervisors is really the one playing with this cash. We have no say anyway.
Correct.
We have to trigger the conversation?
You, you should ask, but in truth, they are the ones that will make whatever determination. And it may be based on a narrow set of covenants or a very wide interpretation of covenants.
Well, I would like to ask respectfully how that George Washington proffer has been earmarked for elementary 18.
Right.
You know, who, you know, who, but what?
Earmarked it and, you know, how that meets the criteria.
But what is this 2035? Is that the earliest that could be? What is that number? Is that a date? You see what I'm saying, Cherryview Landing, 2035?
They, some of them have, there might be expiration dates on them.
Oh, yeah. That's what I was gonna say, 2030 on Liberty Station.
Oh, Liberty Station for the concessions.
2034 on Liberty Knowles.
Okay.
And so to kind of reiterate what, what Dr. Taylor was saying to clarify, I know from discussions with them sometimes, so it doesn't necessarily have to be in that direct election district if those schools where the neighborhood are in that district receive relief from that additional capacity.
Right.
But, you know, usually these are, are programmed in as part of their CIP adoption process. So last year, 18 was on the books, 19 was not on the books. You know, it was very late in the game there, so they wouldn't have had time to program into CIP. So it might be something that they are programming into.
Right, so could it be that, like, for example, the Embry Mill money, if nobody from Embry Mill is going to the school?
And so I don't think it has to be a direct impact. It could be a domino.
Because of the domino impact of creating additional space elsewhere.
Right.
There could, depending on how the covenants are structured of that, that you could use that money for something.
What's ironic about this is that that money could have been used for the fine arts division at North Stafford because a portion of Embry Mill was assigned to North Stafford. And we had, I mean, I had no idea this money was available.
So if we can run through what this process looks like, so a developer negotiates this with the Board of Supervisors for school projects, obviously capital in nature, not programmatic. Without our input, and then they are also the ones that decide when we build to accommodate for growth. And then they put timelines on these proffers. So when we don't build for growth for like 20 years, are we facing the opportunity for things to expire? And then what happens to that money when it expires?
You got two problems with cash. The first problem with cash is that it's a depreciating asset.
Yeah.
Its value changes mostly negatively over time. That is a significant problem.
Aye.
The second issue with cash is just what you are articulating, is that you typically have a timeline associated with it. And if those, that timeline isn't fulfilled, you're already depreciating asset is even.
So I guess my question is.
Comes from worth less to worth less.
If they are appropriating, say, a million dollars for schools, but it's got a 10-year time limit, and we don't build a school in 10 years, does that mean that the developer doesn't have to pay or that the supervisor gets it and doesn't have to use it for schools? Like, does it come to the county or does it stay with the developer?
We can look into that. It's gonna maybe depend on each one. And to clarify, I don't think legally they can negotiate proffers. So when we talk about that, I was gonna.
I understand negotiates the wrong word because of what's coming out of Richmond, but for our like bullam understanding, that's the best one I could come, come up with.
And several of these predate that, that change.
Sure.
So for whatever that's worth.
Back when they were voluntary.
Yes.
Well, I mean, but it does help to understand a little bit because I'm not sure that, I mean, I don't know how many promises we're making on future available money when we can't guarantee that that future available money will be available in the future. As long as we're talking around our words and beating them in, you know, oddly ironic ways, that's fine. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I'm not saying Westlake's going south anytime soon, although, you know, but, but that's a lot, that's a big promise.
It was way down the line, and now it's potentially breathing down our necks. So we understand that things can speed up or retract or whatever based on the market.
I just would be curious to see what 2.4 million is worth in seven years.
The rebuild of Fox Chase.
Sorry.
The rebuild of Fox Chase would be quite a deal in many aspects of Stafford.
Madam Chair, to expedite a little bit, Mr. Fulmer will be collecting questions from the board that we could send to county officials to get answers.
So email them?
Please email them, okay.
We can be prepared in advance of your next joint board meeting with answers to the questions provided by the county government.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the cash, and then there's also land proffers, aware of three land proffers. So two in the Embry Mill subdivision or related to the subdivision, and then one at Westlake. So these are not, not new to anybody. These are ones that you have seen previously. But there is first site in Embry Mill, just a 23-acre site located at the corner of Coastal and Mine. And there is a Dominion utility that runs across the back portion of the site. This is the most recent site that we considered for, in the Embry Mill site that was considered for the ES 18. There is also the Embry Mill site that was considered, but that is directly off of Mine Road at the intersection across from the Embry Mill Road intersection. It has the preservation easement that runs kind of right through the center of it actually, that cuts it in half and makes it.
Is that that yellow line, the square line?
No.
It's a nature trail.
That just, the yellow line shows kind of the usable piece of the property, but right kind of where the, the corner where the road turns, if you just kind of went at a 90-degree angle across from there, it cuts, cuts that site directly in half.
Yeah, you can sort of see it under the.
Which limits the use.
Yeah.
And the, you see the green that's kind of in the top portion of the site? That's a, a pond area.
The land's really got topography too.
The board knew that. This came as part of a land swap because Rouse was the original middle school site and they, they, whoever they was, I guess the supervisors at the time, 10-plus years ago, traded that site for this site.
So this site was a little bit larger, but with that preservation easement runs through it, almost makes it unusable for, for a school.
For a school. Well, I guess though that they're talking about moving that trail. Because they just, they're required to put it in, but the, what I.
It's not just the trailhead. There's like river tributaries or.
Oh, you know, the topography is really bad, yeah.
Because the trailhead is a little bit further.
And then lastly, one that we haven't talked as much about, but is, is one that's kind of in the land bank for the future is Westlake Site, which is approximately 65 acres. Just generally speaking, think of like kind of across the street on the other side of Hartwood Road Route 17, generally in the Hartwood Elementary School area. Right now, it does not have direct access to public water and sewer, even though it is in the urban service area. And, but this land is dedicated for public use, which could include schools, parks, office, library, civic center, public meeting, some of the public uses.
My failing eyesight, and even this isn't helping, I mean, these aren't actually words, right? These are just, like, is there something written on here about what's on this property or, or do they just look wonky? Are they coordinates? Like, it's just weird and this doesn't help either. Like, I'm trying to scroll in on it.
They're just tax map identifying.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's not really supposed to look like.
No, nothing in it.
Okay.
Nothing is. It's seeming to be legible at all.
All right, cool. This, however, is literally.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how that's not terrifying to anybody but me.
It makes my stomach hurt.
Oh.
It's a lot of houses.
I don't want to say, I don't want to say good, but, but that's almost ludicrous if you ask me. So I do.
Houses.
And so have, have the supervisors talked about or have we had a joint land conversation about what part of this 65 acres that we'll get? Is there any easements? Is there port topogra, do we get the hilly site? Do we get the flat site? Or is it all of this or all that? I don't think so.
Yeah, nothing official. Then Jason might be able to talk more about the topography of the site.
Yeah, it does have some challenges like pretty much every site in Stafford nowadays.
Wait, can we put my tuxedo on?
But I would think that would definitely be something that as we get closer to or when the board decides to ask for this property from Westlake
We need to go on a field trip?
How that occurs, we would want to sit down with them and make sure we got a usable chunk. There are some wetland features in the, in the center.
Wetlands in the center? That sounds fantastic.
Um, but it's.
We want that one. We can build a castle with a moat. Come on.
So it's, it's not, you know, 100% 65 usable acres, and there is a portion of the thing for water tanks.
Oh, really?
For public.
Jill Lane had a question. You ready?
Correct.
Um, I just wanted to know, so since it doesn't have like current access to public water and like a proper sewer, so like, what does that kind of like do like in time and like determines of like time and resources and like money? Like, how does that kind of affect the construction of that?
Great, great question. It's like you're a pro veteran on the board. So really, it means that we can't build there yet until there is public water or sewer. We have one school across the street, Hartwood Elementary, which has its share of challenges because it is on a well and a septic system. So we want to rebuild Hartwood Elementary School, but we want to put that in the urban service area in, with access to public water and sewer. So right now, the public water and sewer line is kind of right where we're putting High School 6, ES 18, and the Phoenix Center, UMW, Stafford Lakes area is kind of where our public water ends currently. So as part of this development, the developer is supposed to expend, extend the water and sewer out to their site. So when they do that, would obviously not only add the homes, but it would add the public water and sewer to the site as well.
Thank you. What timeline are you thinking that we need to, like, are you thinking a year from now or are you thinking months from now? Are you thinking after budget season that we should have a conversation?
I think sooner is always better. I think, you know, the developers actively has permits. If you drive out there, the, they're grading in the road right now. They're actively working to install water and sewer along Route 17. And so I think as soon that we get that piece settled and picked out and selected, the better. And this may creep in some of the discussions in next month on possible, you know, land site state that we've been looking at.
Would this site be suitable for both my high school or, sorry, middle school and then elementary school?
We've considered, we've considered that. There's, with 65 acres, there's definitely an opportunity. We would just have to look at it more closely and make sure that it's.
It's a usable 65 acre.
Right. All of it, right. And a water tower. They have to have room for a water tower there, so.
That's a pretty small portion of that.
I still like the castle.
The kids would climb it. That would be great fun.
Oh, yes.
Don't give them any ideas. I don't think she asked. Do they come up with a wall on there?
All right, so just to recap, if you guys have any questions on the, on the cash side or the land side, shoot them to me or Dr. Taylor and we'll make sure we get them covered.
So we didn't discuss the very, very useful and valuable piece of land at, at the King George Line. And I know that we've tangentially discussed that technically there's proffered land in Acquah Harbor. That's an asset in that we own it. Do we have flat information or anything on that?
Yeah, so that, because it was, this was a proffer update, I didn't include the.
It was ownership land. Because you do own property and that's separate and we.
Right, I thought the Acquah Harbor land was proffered as well as the King George land, but like the farm property purchase.
Donated.
Ah, okay. That makes sense.
I think the Acquah Harbor was something that was considered years ago and perhaps.
The potential school site, but I don't think it's not something we.
It showed up in the early subdivision plot. I think it's like from the late 60s. When they put the plot to record, it showed a school site on there.
Is that owned by the?
But it wasn't a proffer.
By the county or the harbor?
The homeowner's association.
That's what I was saying. I thought the harbor.
So it's not school board owned, it's not proffered land. It was just rumored to be, hey, this could be.
That's what we're trying to figure out is because I feel like everyone hears about this rumored land, Acquah Harbor.
No, but Acquah Harbor is, you know, we own it. So you would have, like, that's ours?
Yeah.
And we did look at that.
When you say ours, you're talking about Acquah Harbor, not our board. Yeah, I'm not sharing right now.
I'll say there were a lot of challenges.
The queen of Acquah said, no, thank you.
Shocker.
Say that part again, Jason. I miss what you just said.
There were a lot of challenges with that piece of land when we looked at it, do you recall?
Yeah.
That seems to be a repetitive theme.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no perfect piece left, for sure.
They should have leveled the county when they decided to build back in, whenever hundreds of years.
Electric easement through it.
Tell the county they should have cleared it.
In the interest of time, Madam Chair.
So we're gonna move on to legislative updates?
Also known. Also known as Mrs. Boatwright Goes to Richmond.
I've heard nice comments.
Mrs. Boatwright has made a couple of trips to testify on behalf of legislation for Stafford Schools. Tonight, we're just going to give you a quick update on your legislative agenda and Mrs. Boatwright's going to go through that. And then I'll talk about some other, very quickly, some other interesting legislation that's popped up regarding public education. And then we'll talk about upcoming key dates. As a reminder, you had five overarching legislative priorities, everything from providing adequate funding to flexibility for school construction, to updating the standards of quality, to bipartisan legislation for lab schools. And then we had some legislative vegetables in terms of making some corrections to code that would improve operational efficiency.
Okay, so priority number one deals with the COCA and the support cap. So there is a bill, and today was crossover day, where all the bills from the senate crosses over to the House. So SB 227 is kind of a big bill, but there are also some budget amendments that go with that. So central office positions were not included in the support cap for funding, so that bill would have those positions to be included. And also for those school divisions that are getting the COCA, to have it applied to facility and transportation staff salaries and the SOQ. So fingers crossed, but again, that is a big bill, which comes with, it's huge.
Multi-billion dollars.
So it's a lot of things in the budget amendment that are likely to be cut, but we'll see where this goes. I'm sorry, where did you say this is at in the process right now? So the senate bill's crossed over to the House today, so they're being set for committees. Okay, so it's on its way to a committee? So it's still alive. Okay, good. So it's still alive right now.
It made it out of the senate, now it goes to the House of Delegates and they're going to debate it. And there'll be, I guess reconciliation, right?
There will be reconciliation. So some of the committees will have testimony, some of them will not. And I'll point to one that's going to happen tomorrow morning where no testimony is being taken by this committee because it came out of the senate unanimously. So I think one of my bills is going to fly.
When you finish, I have a question, is the 50% COCA amendment for Stafford alone, or is it Spockier and Spalsylvania included?
So...
They were included in the 25% when we got the 25%.
Right, so because this one is being sponsored by our delegates, this one is for Stafford alone.
Bless you.
So that one is in as a budget amendment. And by these two, there's also another one hanging out there for $2 million in FY '25 and $2 million in FY '26, just for Stafford. But we'll see where that goes, but...
We took a lot of votes.
So it, so those are in budget amendments.
Thank you to Durant and Milde.
Yep.
So when we hear the supervisors talk about the importance of getting 100% COCA for Stafford County, I think they're always talking about a number that's much larger, like 20, 26, 25%. But a 50% COCA is 5 million.
In additional money.
In addition.
We already...
So we're at 25, 20.
Right, they're talking about, they talk about an increase of 20 something million.
It'll actually be a total of 20 million if we were at 100% COCA. So...
Okay, so I guess I'm not understanding how 50% is 5 million and 100% is 20.
Because we're already received 5 million, so we would give an additional 5 million, which would bring us up to about 10 million in total money of COCA. So this is in additional monies.
Okay.
And so 100% COCA would equal a total of 20 million.
Okay.
So it's really 25% increase added to the 25% we already have.
Yeah.
Right.
Which will take us to the 50% level. But this is outside of seeking the 100% COCA adjustment, correct?
They are not seeking it.
They're not seeking it.
Okay, so alright, so just, alright. This is, this is their budget amendment, so it's 50%.
This was their result. This was their result.
Is this more likely to go through if it's just Stafford as opposed to Fockier?
No.
No.
I would think that the more people we bring in, the more they're going to... Yeah, I did not look at the other delegations for the other counties, I was just concerned about ours. I was just curious, like, to know how to tell myself to think.
It is less likely, yeah, it is less likely to go through without other localities, but it is more likely to go through because we're not asking for the whole thing. So it, this is a little bit of a split the baby, baby in some regard, but it's still a step in the right direction. And I will say this, it's gotten farther this year than it's ever gotten before. So, you know, it's still alive, you know?
It's still alive.
It's still alive.
And the fact that all of it's still alive is kind of a big deal.
Senator McPike, this is the one that, you know, we're very excited about along with Stafford County, is the 1% sales tax to localities. It sailed through the senate. So I, there is a high possibility, I think, that they will do it.
It actually passed the House...
Today?
Today.
Today, okay.
Passed the House, the House version passed today.
Well, this still leaves it up to the localities to independently decide whether they want it.
I was going to say, so it's not... It would be a referendum item if it doesn't... It's not automatically assigned to the schools though as a construction cost. No, but because we're a Dillon Rule state, this is a big deal. Okay. So, you know, the localities only have the powers to do that which the General Assembly has granted them to do. So there were only like eight or something local governments that could even do this prior to this sheer fingers crossed. So this is a big deal that everybody in the state will have the ability. But there is a process where it does require like, you know, this court piece and then there has to be a referendum.
We need to toast our water bottles, we did a good job.
A what?
We need to toast our water bottles.
And legislative delegation has done a great job.
They've done a good job of picking up our bills. So there are some amendments that are out there to the SOQs, which we're excited about. Counselors and support staff, that's part of the specialized staff. So the way that that's looking right now is the SOQs require three, it will go up to four if the funding is allowed. Counselors, we're looking at a lowered ratio of counselors to students. It's going through as SB 127, but that too, they've incorporated a bunch of other bills to go with it. So that one crossed over today. But there are some J-Lark study implications, which everybody is aware of. They had some short-term goals and also some long-term goals that are in there. Basically, one is to just pre-calculate the way schools are funded, but that's a multi-year goal in the state.
So Susan, I think we have to thank the culinary arts students that staffed the high school.
And Dr. Taylor for like writing everything so it was like...
And rolled them in with the food.
Rip it and turn it.
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Boatwright gets a lot of...
Yes, I've heard from some of the delegates...
Whether the way we do, I think helps a lot because then it's like, this is what we want and it's in black and white, it's irreparable.
And it's painted by numbers.
And then of course, Ms. Boatwright is an excellent advocate for it.
And I will say, I've gotten compliments from her, from delegates and senators as well, that she's quick to answer and no matter, you know, hey, I need you to come down to Richmond, on my way, you know? And so she's really thrown herself into doing this for us, so I appreciate it a lot.
One of the things that they did say was that it was easy and they liked the way that we did ours and that we gave them the language.
Yeah.
Because it gave them a good place to start from. And they told other boards to call us. Yes, but we have, but we have a superintendent position. Well, and I was like, you don't want to talk to me, you want to talk to Dr. Taylor. But I can hook you up. That's what I said.
A little bit of a Debbie Downer on this one.
Uh, yeah, so our, like, there is a constitutional problem with the lab school legislation, but it's dead, but the funding is still there. So that's the, that's the plus side of this.
So what are we going to, what is your recommendation?
So right now, our recommendation is still to wait because UMW is looking at what it can do to still rectify it because they still want to invest in the project. And even if that means reducing some of their control and ceding that to a regional school board like we have with our other regional programs. That's on the table right now, but ultimately I think, you know, this is going to come back to the board. You're either going to have an operating agreement that you endorse or one that you don't. Now, I've said from the beginning that we like the project, it's a good project, it's a good opportunity, but if we're not comfortable with the governance of it, don't do it.
Can I ask for clarification on the budget? You say the funding is still there, so is the funding there past year five?
Right now, it is, it is only actually per biennial. So your funding is only tagged per biennium, but it is scoped out so that it will continue as long as the projects continue.
She has, she has set up her five-year budget, she has it set up to be, and to be funded with a certain number of kids, down to a certain number of kids. She has it funded that way. Yes.
Right, I'm just asking what the state has...
Yeah, but just like you can only adopt one budget year at a time, the state can only adopt a biennial at a time, so...
So it's only got one more year of funding technically in the biennial budget.
For their portion.
For their portion.
Yeah, that's right. So there's, there's some decision points that you're going to see this again in work sessions, you're going to see this again and have to vote June, July.
June, July.
Before making a final decision.
UMW have the power to delegate that.
Under the way that it's written, yes. They have a lot of latitude and they also can basically define their lane. And their lane that they have the most interest in right now is providing two things, is university instruction and also supervision of educational practicum students that are engaged in that. Their interest has not been in actually trying to run a K-12 institution, so... We do need that in writing.
When we know, we have accepted students into that program, have we not?
And it's all been with the caveat and it's well documented, then, you know, may or may not go to peace.
What happens to the students if we did not move forward, that the other programs are filled?
Well, we might be looking at other programs, but right now, we're invested in trying to make it work if we can make it work, but if we can't make it work, we'll have our recommendation.
So what's the time, what's the timing, you know, when's it going to come, something going to come back to us?
This spring.
Well, you said June or July, that's this summer.
That's your drop dead time.
Okay, so we'll get something from when.
Because that's when our original signed thing runs out, right?
You're going to, you're going to need to...
Yeah, August, August 24th.
And just for practical reasons, you're going to, you're going to want to decide sooner rather than later.
You're right.
Next one.
Okay, employment verification, this was one of our bills. It requires school boards to verify employment requests from other school boards within 10 business days. This one actually came from our HR department. It will certainly help them with timely hiring and accurate of staff, accurate hiring of staff, making sure that people are placed on the right experienced staff. And just being able to verify their employment in a timely fashion. This one passed the senate unanimously, so I don't expect that there will be any problem in the House with this one. This one helps everybody in the state and that's the way when I testified about it, I counterpoised it, is that it helps everybody, so.
Not if you don't have people to do the job.
I was going to ask, like, does this mean that potentially, I know we're understaffed, right? So that makes it maybe a little bit harder for some people who have job certification as their task, like, they've got to do it now. Do you know what I'm... Well, it's 10 business days, so, so it did start off as 10 days, there was a friendly amendment to make it business days, which I didn't object to. So it does give people more time. Of course, it is contingent upon people having staff to do it, but it's better than them waiting six months. No, you're right, I'm just, I was curious, like, there's nothing, there's nothing to help with staff, there's no money attached to it or anything. At least it puts a little bit of urgency. Uh, there's no money attached to it unless the wish is just given right, so. So 443 is actually up tomorrow in full committee, they're not taking testimony on it because it did so well in the senate. But this is the one where school boards have to send a complete disciplinary file. You would think that when we request it, when there's a student requesting records that will come, it's not coming. And so what's happening in some instances is that we're finding out that a student was actually on some type of discipline coming to Stafford that we found out about subsequently. Maybe when they're having some issues, but what this does do as well, it helps Stafford to be a little bit more proactive. Because if you're finding a pattern of certain types of behaviors, then on the proactive side, counseling staff, social work staff can be a lot more proactive in helping that student to acclimate and adjust to the county.
And it makes our schools a lot safer too.
Exactly. So this is what I understand from it, is that what we're really looking to do is be able to set some controls into place if we need them.
Correct.
But we have not been able to do that in the past because we do not have this information. Because we don't get the information although it's requested. So unfortunately, we have to have a law that says that we have to get it. And also more importantly too, these are the juvenile dispositions. Right now, the law says that, so if we receive a juvenile disposition of a criminal charge, we don't have to forward it on to another school board if we already know that student has transferred on. This says you have to send it.
I'm just shocked that it's, that we don't have the option, I'm just shocked.
Well, this is born of our negative experiences. Right, unfortunately, it's right. So Senator Durant also picked up SB 444, this is disclosure of certain information in delinquency cases. So this one is permit superintendence the way that it was amended to file a written request to get certain information associated with juvenile court dispositions. Sometimes there are conditions attached and we don't know what the conditions are. So right now, all we get is pretty cryptic information. It'll say convicted, deferred. Deferred are the most problematic ones because you know there are conditions attached. We don't often get the conditions and so then we don't know what to do with the student. Sometimes parents don't share the information for whatever reason. So this provides a mechanism to be able to get the information so that we can make informed decisions about students in terms of placements and also in terms of strategies to help them. Right now, no information is not helping us to do what's best for that student and also the students and staff around them.
Alright. I would say that if you could imagine it, we saw it in legislation this year, but there's always going to be something new, so I can't say that in good faith, but we're pretty close. Anytime that you see over 500 senate bills introduced in the senate, it's a busy session. And there's over 1,000 bills that were introduced into the House. And so these were just some of the fun ones. And I don't, I'm not going to spend a ton of time in here because I've shared all of this information with the board in Friday bulletins. But, you know, they've had everything from adding a line in the budget to have STEM competitions, to granting boards the ability to ban cell phones, which you already have the ability to do that. To how they fund slots for early childhood programs. Probably one of the more significant ones is also something that came out of the House from Delegate Koiner. And Senator Favola also sponsored a companion bill in the senate. It was a pretty comprehensive relook at the special education offerings within the state. As all of us know, this is a federal program that operates through states. It's not necessarily a state program, so the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is federal legislation. And so this has, this creates a lot of structures. One of the more interesting bills that came out of this was a separate bill from Senator Favola about developmentally appropriate education. Hopefully, we're providing that anyway. One of the ones that always surfaces every year is homeschool participation in interscholastic sports. I will say that bipartisantly, this dies on the vine in Virginia every year. It died very quickly this year as well. One of the really exciting, dare I say sexy pieces of legislation that came out, that got a little bit of headlines, came from Senator Lucas requiring that teachers be compensated in Virginia at or above the national average. That would be quite a movement for southwest Virginia and some other places, or even Stafford County.
Would there be money attached to that?
That's why.
Yes, and so there would be, there would be the states...
There would have to be a lot of money attached to that.
And so...
And then the local match.
Yeah, the really exciting piece of this piece of legislation was obviously that there would be the state's portion. But then also compelling localities to meet the, their required local effort. So really, really lightning in a bottle. We saw earlier a reference to Senate Bill 127 from Senator Van Valkenburg from Henrico County. And he is putting forth a staffing standard for counselors that's very aspirational to us. We've been working through this with our staffing standards and then moving from three to 1,000 for support positions to four to 1,000. This is in line with also our staffing standards as well. So the fact that Senator Van Valkenburg actually picked up one of the board's legislative priorities and basically carried that bill to a T is pretty fantastic. One of our neighbors, Senator Carol Foye... One of our neighbors, Senator Carol Foy, you know, trying to create some inventive alternative pathways to advanced diplomas, recognizing some career technical education courses for advanced diplomas, very exciting, good stuff. Issuances of a one-year license, this is something that every HR department in Virginia would lay down in traffic to try to get, which is just to the ability to issue a local license. There used to be a two-year division superintendent issued local license. This is the reinstitution of a one-year local license. But but it's, it hopefully will get enough priority because this this really does give school divisions a lot of flexibility. Somebody who's not quite ready for a provisional license doesn't meet the minimum criteria for provisional license, but could eventually meet that that within a one-year timeframe, it buys us 12 months.
Does that mean you don't have to send them to a permission from the state?
Correct.
Don't we do that already, we have to ask?
We have to ask, yeah. And so this this just gives us, we can just hire at that. One of the really, I wanna say exciting, but less likely to get passed because of the money committees is Senator Hashmi's Support Cap SOQ, one that I referenced earlier. This will likely get amended for budget reasons down the road. But this is a multimillion dollar impact to Stafford County and multimillion dollar impact to a lot of other larger counties. Senator Rome also put in a really exciting bill to make all school meals free to students.
Except the the money attachment to this is not.
It's not exciting, yes, you're absolutely right.
I was gonna ask about that.
So, you know.
Something known for breakfast and lunch.
Yeah, the the idea is exciting, but the the corresponding money piece is not.
Well, is there not?
Explain that. Don't we already have this?
Um, to a certain degree, yes.
Right, I mean, we already have this, this is for all students.
This, but this is, we don't, we actually don't.
I get lunch for free.
Oh, my gosh.
And we are, and we have heard the word for it.
To a certain degree, we try not to promulgate that part. This is not really applicable to Stafford, but it's interesting that the Senate and the legislature is exploring alternatives to student transportation. And this is really more for localities that have public transportation as a as a primary means of of supporting student transportation, how they finance that. This one is definitely a big one that got a lot of attention is Senate Bill 586 about preventing or disallowing schools from suspending students for certain offenses. This met with opposition from every single educational support organization, from the VEA down to the Principals Association.
So how is that aligned?
It's, it, I believe it died, but I'm just pointing it out just because it it got a lot of attention. Similarly, in the House, one of the quickest up-downs was House Bill 13. Delegate Ware from Chesterfield introduces this bill every year in the General Assembly to require high school students to pass a U.S. naturalization assessment. We effectively already do this with some of our other assessments, but effectively, this is a requirement that Senator, excuse me, Delegate Ware tries to to get in every year and and dies on the vine in committee every year as well. Can't get bipartisan support for that one. Require, this is the companion bill to Senate Bill 104 is Delegate Clark's 187 requiring the teacher compensation. And then Delegate Fagans and Delegate Hernandez both had different versions of Senate Bill 127 that have ultimately been merged for crossover. You've got other adjustments through Delegate Simons to the SOQs, all of which are friendly for public education. Delegate Rasul is from Roanoke, and he is the Chair of the Education Committee. And Delegate Rasul introduced several pieces of legislation that would help school divisions. One of the the more exciting ones for HR departments is granting a wider swath of reciprocity for teaching licenses from out of state and the Department of Education, Department of Defense, schools, so forth and so on, and granting a lot more leeway for that. You see the companion bill for 283. Another Senator, excuse me, Delegate Rasul bill that is trying to expand some of the staffing formulas in the SOQs. Really interesting set of legislation that came out about Narcan and the administration of Narcan. One of the ones that I thought was particularly interesting came from Delegate Rasul. Trying to establish some regulatory guidelines about the administration of Narcan is probably a good idea. So they they, I think the the General Assembly likes the idea of Narcan, but is struggling to find its footing on how they want schools to be able to use it and under what parameters. And they they will likely pass something in this space, but 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 a little bit difficult. One of the most significant bills that hasn't gotten a ton of attention, but would have a tremendous positive impact for us in Stafford County, came from Delegate Rasul in the use of locally adopted growth assessments. Right now, the state has its own SOL growth assessment that we administer in the fall, winter, and spring. And it is tied to the end, of course, SOL assessments as well in the spring that we're all very familiar with. We would be able to use an assessment like the MAP assessment in lieu of the the state SOL growth assessment, which would save our kids weeks' worth of assessments in schools. It would be truly transformative. The Omnibus Special Education Bill that I mentioned earlier from Delegate Coiner, lots of institutionalization of requirements for special education into state code. One of the other ones that was really interesting from Delegate Rasul, and you can see we're at House Bill 1,477, was a model that looked at competency-based instructional time versus seat hours. Very interesting, would give a lot of flexibility to a lot of school systems. So where are we? Happy Crossover Day. Today is crossover. So each session is concluding its individual business, and we'll start kicking bills over to committees on the other chambers. The the lower house will take on the upper house's bills and vice versa, all leading into this weekend, which is Budget Weekend or Budget Sunday, as everyone is well known, where all budget amendments have to be in by midnight. And Budget Conferree will begin starting on Monday. You can tag February 19th in your calendar as Chris and Thomas Crisis Day, where we whip out calculators and start looking at everything because there's no cap tools available yet. The board has tagged a legislative day for board members that are available to go visit Richmond on the 21st. The 22nd is the deadline for each chamber's budget bill to be approved. This is when we will literally have some final versions of stuff, and we'll be we'll be able to make some tight recommendations in the weeks that follow. Ultimately, this all concludes at the end of the month, in the first week of March. And by the second week of March, they are adjourned. They will reconvene after a month and a week for the governor to consider each bill, sign bills, veto bills, and then they'll reconvene for a veto session. The likelihood that there is going to be a state budget deal, it's a great question. I think both chambers of the legislature positioning for a budget confrere session will mean that there's gonna be a very aggressive budget to come out of the legislature, which will look very different than the governor's proposed budget. So there might be a little bit of standoffishness that happens. Ultimately, that is what you have a veto session for. It is the first year of the biennial, so it's the longer of the of the two sessions for sure. And this is kind of the timeline that we're working with. So more to come.
Before we move forward, I just wanna pause, and I want to say we have an hour left. We have budget, and we have our closed session. So I would like to present on the dog park, but knowing that it's gonna be at the 7 o'clock, try to keep our questions to a minimum unless it helps your understanding. But like substantive questions, let's save for the open, for the regular meeting.
Thanks. So you have some of the attachment printed for your reference. But just as far as on the screen, just wanted a kind of dirty, plain, simple image so that we can kind of track along, and I'll let actually Jason kind of walk you through that at a high level.
Sure. So if you're familiar with the Hampton Oaks Elementary Site, there is a sort of a parking area just as you come into the left. And just just beside that is the area that the county has requested. You see it outlined there, it's about one acre, it's referred to on there as parcel S21. So the county's requesting approximately one acre of land for use as a dog park. Understanding from just discussing with county staff is that at a high level, they're not looking to tear down trees and and construct anything elaborate. They basically wanna look to fence in the existing area down there and create create a natural, a naturally shaded dog park area for the local citizens to use. In order to make that area accessible to the public, they are requesting the ingress egress easement, which is the area just over top of the entrance drive and parking lot area. Now, that would give, it would be a public ingress egress easement for for use by the public. Of course, in theory, the the school's open to the public to traverse now. But it would give, it would give the, if you will, the county some right to that area of the property for accessing the dog park.
So are you talking about that area of the parking lot?
Correct, that area of the parking lot and the area of the entrance that's overlaid there with the white line work. And again, in talking with county staff, they're not anticipating this to be a a dog park that would have a lot of vehicular traffic per se. They're envisioning it to be much more just a local community, folks walk their walk their dogs over and and use it. And we have talked with the county just at a high level about some some of the questions we had. But just in referencing some of the concerns or questions we've heard from the board or the school, we did just put together just some very draft language at this point for an MOU.
Can we pause right there for a second, I'm sorry, Mr. Tauri? In fairness to the county, they have not seen this MOU. We typically would not do an MOU for a gift, but because of the proximity to the school, we would want to have a conversation about this for sure. But in in fairness to them, this is not something that that we'd even had as part of a discussion topic or even a back and forth with them about, so.
Are we allowed a gift? I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I think it's just a, an opportunity to lay out conversation points.
And absolutely. And articulating your concerns is a is a good way for, from a format standpoint, to just lay something out. But, you know, even if it if it comes to the point where the board does take action on this, and they don't wanna do an MOU, that's just as normal as wanting to do an MOU. But notice that that if we were to endorse an MOU and it went across the county, they haven't seen it, they haven't evaluated it, they haven't had their attorneys look at it, none of that's taken place. That it's very preliminary for this document.
That's that's right. And and we did send it, send them a link to it last week. But again, this was just recently put together by staff in response to some of the concerns and questions we've heard. So I know upon initial review, the county did express having some concerns with the MOU. Mr. Brian Southwell's also here from the county, he's the Director of Parks and Recreation. So he'll be able to hopefully help answer any quick questions you all might have. But in a nutshell, I think some of the concerns were about just making sure that there's adequate signage to prevent cars from, you know, going all over the school property or dogs or anything of that nature. As it is now, my understanding is people fairly regularly will traverse the school property with dogs anyway. So perhaps this gives a more formal, appropriate location for that, which which could be a benefit. But obviously, with that, we would wanna make sure that there would be some regular monitoring of like, you know, the trash receptacles and any animal waste, things of that nature, which, again, we've discussed just at a high level with the county. And that would be something that we would wanna kind of work on.
Would this cleanup and man maintenance of the property have a schedule so that we would know, oh, they're coming next week, too?
Yeah, I I think it's something, I mean, we work pretty hand in hand with with Brian's team regularly. We, anything from regular field maintenance at the different at the different high schools and so forth, so. But yes, we would, if we noticed a particular issue, generally just making a quick phone call over to their team saying, hey, can you check into this, they're on top of it pretty quick. But yeah, I would anticipate that this, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, that this would be on some sort of regular, semi-regular route for your team to visit and take a look at.
Yeah, correct. We have several parks on either end of mine road, and we're tracking mine road regularly. And and as for dog waste, we'll have dog waste dog bags on the inside, outside to provide to neighbors to be able to clean up and deposit. We we clean those up every night. We'll have staff that's driving by locking up parts and buy into that trash. We we don't like trash, that type of trash to be out, because other animals like it.
That's disgusting.
It'll be pulled out, we've seen everything from crows to squirrels to everything.
Like, how many dog parks do you have in Stafford?
Currently, right now, we have dog parks at Duck Park and South Stafford. And once that opens, there's regular people coming to the three minutes saying, we want something up north, we want something up. So we do have another one planned at at Mountain View that's going through the planning and zoning right now. We hope to get permit on that site done here pretty soon in construction. Those sites will have restrooms, water, parking, a lot of other amenities that if you're gonna be a destination, you can put your dog in a car that you're gonna go to. We're not anticipating, we're not gonna put water out here. We're not, the only things we'll be here is like a single bench and trash bags and everything.
So there will be access off the North Hampton Boulevard Park directly into the park, they won't have to to cut through, though?
No, ma'am, yes, ma'am, we're looking right off sidewalk. They would have to actually go down sidewalk in the middle lower part is where we anticipate having our entrance for your gate double.
The gate would be down, the gate would be down, isn't it?
Down at the bottom.
So that parking that's there now would still be maintained for the school parking, that would not be for the dog park, right?
Correct. But again, and and we've monitored it a little bit recently, there's typically some open parking spots there.
Not a lot.
Not a lot, but so it is, it is possible that we would have folks from time to time, time to time grab or use a spot or two. And I think that's that's fine. We would just wanna make sure that there would be some sort of signage and monitoring that, you know, hey, this doesn't become, no, no, don't do that, an issue.
Yeah, I'm worried about being problematic.
The school has been asking for more parking because the parking is.
Every elementary school does.
Yeah, so that's why they wanna just make sure that there's like super loud signage saying, don't park here for the dog park.
Right, because this is, that's an injury during normal school hours, you know.
They want a parking lot, too, and it's school.
Unless there's a group, I hate parking.
So, um, so this parking here is school parking?
Yes.
That's what you're saying? And you're saying that people would have to walk to this parcel of land this way and not come around in through the school property to do it, to get to the park, right?
Correct.
But obviously, somebody would cut.
Well, right, I mean, but the assumption being.
Yeah, that's true, unless there was a.
Would be down at this side to try and force the activity away from.
The school.
It's a very walkable neighborhood, but most people just walk.
Right, and there's street parking, would there be street parking here for folks that wanted to?
No, not really, because the car rider line and the buses coming over there.
Okay, I'm just, so there's only, there's a couple of things that came to my attention when this came to be. People just worried about car traffic in their neighborhood and adding an additional.
You can park your car in front of your house.
Burden to that particular area, but, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've never seen a street there in that road or gone up that way, I've never seen cars.
Schools in that job.
Yeah, the schools over here, you can absolutely park on the street here, because I do it all the time, and my kid walks across. So there's there's always ample parking for people. I mean, it's not great, it's not ideal, but you can park there.
I don't think they're like.
I'm just trying to see about keeping people away from up here, which is the school park, and focusing them down here, which is, if that's the end game.
Is the neighborhood that would like, like, is it up here more?
Or is it across the?
Is the neighborhood that would like, like, is it up here more or is it across the street?
Oh, it's Hampton, Hampton Oaks.
It's everywhere.
I don't know where it is.
Everywhere.
Oh, it's everywhere. It's everywhere. So this is very centralized.
It's, yeah.
Right, the community center is over on this side of, okay. It's over, what is it?
This is the east side of, obviously, the Hampton Oaks.
So you're going down my, basically hanging the left up there a quarter mile off of my.
That I don't know, because that's a.
Is there another slice, I know, I don't want to cut us off, but I know we'll be discussing it later.
I have a question, thank you.
It's this, it's this whole thing.
Yeah, so it's not like there'd be something we are talking about.
I was always under the impression that if we, we had school property and we did not need it for school use, that we were required to surplus it to the county. If we were, you know, we don't have the power to, we can't sell property.
You cannot sell property.
But we can gift property?
You're effectively surplusing it to the county government.
No, we're not typically surplus it, we're doing a gift to be the gift. We got a different process that you go through.
I would have mentioned.
Probably on this, but right question.
We can take a look into that, the formal process and, you know, whether you need a gift.
Would we have the option of, given there's a memorandum of understanding, instead of transferring the property, having a memorandum of understanding that the park service is using it like they would use fields for things? I'm just, like, is that an option or?
I don't know, that's a good question, and the question is, what can we do with that property? Now, if we let fields use it, that's probably a temporary kind of thing. If this was designed to be permanent, there may be other processes we have to have.
Probably, probably want it to be temporary to see how it is what we want.
So one of the, one of the.
Does it work well?
We're not stuck.
Yeah, I love that.
So one of the concerns that we had with doing it, that, through that approach, was just making sure that the schools aren't liable for anything that could occur within the dog park, right?
So what happens if kids, if the park service is using our field and a kid is playing sports and something happens on the school field, are we liable?
Well, there, yeah, well, anytime there's an outside organization using any of our facilities, we have requirements for insurance that they have to, you know, that's required as part of that use. That would be how that would typically be handled in that circumstance. I think this was a little bit different than just because it was intended very specifically for the dog park use. It's not to say we couldn't look into that further as an option, if that's what the board wants, to perhaps just go with a more simple MOU. But our understanding was that this would be a cleaner way to protect the board's interest in general, but we can take.
Can you also just explain to me, it says Rock Hill Magisterial District.
Yeah, that's an error on the.
All right, because I'm literally like.
We'll talk about this when we get out there.
Yeah, just going to scoop it up and move it to Rock Hill.
I know, I don't know.
They did change your boundaries.
I know, again, that's what I'm like, that's not the boundary.
I thought we were taking Hartwood.
Yeah, I think they moved Rock Hill there.
I changed way too. Yes, it did.
Well, actually, the magisterial districts on here are not necessarily, our voting districts, back in the day, the county had very different districts. So you may, I know there's some apply a magisterial districts of Garrisonville Road, which are part of the Garrisonville District. So, you know, that may or may not be an error in part of, I know, but there weren't that many districts in Stafford back in the day.
In the interest of time, Madam Chair, I'm going to endeavor to get this done very quickly.
There's also food out there.
So just as a couple of items, the board had asked for some feedback as to some options to consider for potentially amending its budget that gets adopted for tonight. So I've distilled that down to four options that we've investigated based on conversations with the board. Option one, effectively keeping the budget as it is, knowing that there's the high probability of increased revenue. I'm going to caveat all of this by saying that time is not our friend in one regard, but time is very much our friend in another regard. You should adopt a budget tonight because you should have a budget adopted by March one to quote unquote, send to the county. Now, there is nothing that limits you in your ability to come back at your March meeting on March fifth and then make an amendment. And I will say that the landscape, that there's a higher probability that the landscape will be significantly improved by March fifth, that you could make an amendment. But to stay within your bounds and to stay within your pre-adopted timeline and the timeline that the county expects, you should deliver a product, a budget, on time before March one and then go back and amend it if you want to. Option one would be a good option for that regard. You could also fully fund phase one of the non-licensed scale, pause phase three of the licensed scale, fully fund phase one of the non-licensed scale and phase three of the licensed scale, showing an anticipated increase in state revenue. Or you could fully fund phase one and fully fund phase three on the licensed scale, but show the increase and pass that increase off to the board supervisors to be funded locally. So what does that look like? So the math behind this is if you were to keep your budget as it is right now, your budget would look as the documents that have been presented, knowing very well that you have a high probability of having additional state revenue that you could go back and amend your budget. This is probably the most fiscally prudent because it is working with the known quantities that you have right now. And granted, nothing is guaranteed, but you have a revenue projection from your county administrator and you have a revenue projection from the governor's proposed budget. When that revenue projection changes, you should change your budget. Until that changes, that's kind of what you got. Option number two, swapped non-licensed and licensed. You put a stop to phase three of the licensed scale and do a flat three percent. And then you could fully fund phase one of the non-licensed scale. I don't recommend this, and the reason I don't recommend this is because there's already a high probability that you will be able to fix this without additional drama. The additional drama that this will create with your largest workforce will be significant. And I'm not sure that it's worth introducing that additional drama for two weeks when you're, have the high probability of fixing that anyway.
So Dr. Taylor, we've already set people, asking them to come back next year, is that correct? And some people have, I mean, and letters of intent or something like that.
Yes, we do, we do do an intense survey and that is typically done in January. And the reason that it's done in January is because we issue staffing allocations to principals in February. And folks have basically made their decision, not, and of course, this is all subject to change and it's non-binding. But some of these folks do make their decision waiting to see what the superintendent's proposed budget is, how the school board reacts to it. And they are making their plans because as we are posting available positions on the internet this week for next year, other school divisions are doing the same thing.
So when you say it might be a bad idea, one of the reasons it might be a bad idea is suggesting to teachers that we're.
We support stopping them.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, we don't know yet, we don't know yet what.
Sure, so we're suggesting to teachers that we'll give them what we would have given the support staff.
But why is this costly to fix later, but the other option not costly to fix later? Because the other option is.
Oh, both are costly to fix, there's no question, but you've already kind of started the train rolling on one.
Okay.
And so you do have, you will end up incurring a repair cost. Now, I will say this, I think this is all academic because your gap is a $6.5 million gap to actually do both. And to have a fully funded phase three and a fully funded phase one. And I think that there's a high probability that you, that you will likely be able to amend your budget to include both. That being said, I would advise prudence and to work with the figures that you have until you have that flexibility.
Especially because we keep talking about the variable on the state and we are not talking about the variable on the local end.
Yes.
Because we could get all of the money from the state and get $5 million locally.
Yeah, I think that.
Yeah.
And then we have a $10 million gap that we thought we would get state money to fix, but it's really that we need the state money to fix the local underfunding.
So if you are dead set on making a change and you absolutely want to make a last minute change, this is probably the one that I would say you might be able to roll with. This is my best alternative to a negotiated agreement option. It's still not what I would recommend, but if you absolutely were going to make a change, this is, this could be on the table, which is to show an anticipated increase in state revenue. I'm going to tell you that I can't speak with confidence as to what that anticipated state revenue is. So it's a little bit of a shot in the dark. And I got to tell you, I got a very narrow confidence interval on this. I'm not sure that I could give you great advice.
I personally think we should just let it ride. I think adding any, any, we don't, I don't like promising somebody something in the hopes that the state budget will become. I think that we settled on a budget number and as much as I.
Well, we didn't settle on a budget number.
We settled on our budget, on this budget, and I think.
Who settled on?
Well, we don't vote on it till later.
I don't think settled is the right, I don't, I don't.
I know, you're saying, but.
Here's what this looks like.
I'm not sure I want to change anything because I think there's too many risks involved in any of these things.
We've been voting the 453 for the entire cycle, I think is what you're saying, is that we've been looking at this 453 million.
So here's what it would look like.
And that seems to be sticking now.
To do this in terms of the revenue picture, so you get your base, you'd be adding 30.3 million, that's 23.8 million plus the 6.5, with 15 in local, for a total of 459.9, okay? That is what this option looks like on the revenue side, okay? The other option is to do the exact same thing, but instead of attributing the additional funds to the, to the state, you'd attribute the additional funds to the board supervisors. And here's what that looks like. So you would do the $23.8 million plus the 15 in local plus an additional 6.5. And so that you'd be, you'd be changing your request from the county government to not what the county administrator is likely going to propose at 15 million to 21.5 million, which is not likely going to fall.
But we haven't proposed anything yet.
Correct.
Correct.
Just you proposing options to us.
There's someone needs to identify how we provide.
Okay.
How we provide, I mean, this is, this is literally my least favorite part of any of this. And I have a lot of least favorite parts, but this is my least least favorite part.
Today.
Correct, just saying. But anyway, my point is that our support staff are very much also looking at us and I don't think it's fair to them to tell them that we're rolling the dice on their dedication and experience and what they've given to this county either because we are either afraid to ask for more or don't or think that one action is going to bring an unequal reaction, does that make sense? So it is troubling to me, how do we show them then that we 100% fully support bringing them into the 21st century in the salary range without also then trying. I just, that's very confusing to me.
And I think I have an answer for you.
Okay.
And my answer is yes, but.
Oh, God.
And, or yes, and, and say, we hear what you're saying.
And.
And we are going to adopt a budget within our means and we are going to wait for this timeline to play out and in two weeks' time revisit that number. Because if you can, you should, and.
And we could prioritize.
And you could prioritize that.
The 3.8 million for the phase one of the service scale and then the 2.7 million, which is the second half of the phase three for the teachers.
And I think that that's been the consensus of this board, really from the get. Throughout this whole budget process, you've prioritized employee salaries from the start, so.
Yes, go ahead.
My advice to you would be to not change because you, this is what is fiscally probably most prudent at the time, but then absolutely to take advantage of the fact that once you have an adopted budget and once you have an indication from the legislature that you do make a change.
So is it correct that the governor did not put any money in for support staff?
So the governor did put in some money for salary in the form of a half a percent bonus for SOQ funded positions.
Okay, so, so is it.
But no salary.
Is it possible that the legislature would put something in for?
Highly probable.
Okay, so in which case, that would give us more flexibility in terms of what we could do for support staff? So we could certainly make the point that we are very disappointed that the governor's budget only has a half a percent and we have. And it's not even as a bonus, it's not sure. And we have, we have put in our budget a three percent increase, right?
Yes.
And so if, hopefully, the legislature decides to do more than, did you say half or a quarter percent? Half.
Half a percent in the form of a bonus.
Half a percent in form of the bonus, then hopefully legislature will do more. And if that happens, that frees up the money that we put in for a three percent to do more, right?
Madam Chair, can I propose that in talking through this, that we go ahead and put it on either work session or regular meeting agenda, the, in our March meeting, to at least come back for a conversation?
Absolutely.
Can we just put it on our agenda just so we, as we're talking through this, that we're showing, and you know, normally we wouldn't do this until after the supervisors have said what the tax rate is. But I would say it, we're trying to maintain the optics that, and heart that we have for our support staff. And I just feel like if we can get this on our next meeting's agenda for at least the conversation of where are we now?
Yeah, and Madam Chair, I would feel comfortable that you even have this as an action item and that you also have a work session item on this because I do think that the world changes dramatically in our, in our favor in 10 days' time. But we just can't accelerate past that March one deadline without having something. So if we can make it clear that this is where we are today, knowing that we will be in a different place 10 business days from now and that the outlook for the board's considerations, because you'd still have to make a change and you all have to agree to it too, would look differently with different information. And I think that we're all in a position where you can echo the kind of support that you know you feel for our service staff, but just to be patient for 10 business days.
The flip side of that is that we could take the 3.7 from the 10 plus million approximately that you've allocated for the teacher partial phase three. We could take that 3.7 from that, put the staff, support staff on phase one. And I know you're saying we can't do it and I don't understand, I'm sure there's math there.
You can.
But we can partially fund phase three. We're not quite to phase three, we could do part. But if we take this 3.7 from that 10, 12 million, we can't partially get them, we cannot get partway to phase three?
What you would be doing is you would do a flat three percent.
But why couldn't we do, what are we doing now? We're doing a portion, we're doing a, we're doing a percentage of phase three. Because we're not putting the teachers on phase three, because we don't have enough.
Your portion would not look very different than what is already in place right now without the escalation of one step. That is all you could afford with that amount of money. So you're not, you're not actually doing anything, you're just funding what you already have plus a year.
But I just, I can't support this, we're in year three, we've gone three years. We promised these staff that we're going to, you know, we're going to, we're going to get you there. We haven't today, we have a choice, it's a hard choice. It's a hard choice, but it's not like we're taking everything away. We're taking 3.7 million out of, what is the amount that you're funding? 3.7 out of 12 million to put the support staff at the bottom, the first phase, that we tried to put them on three years ago. And really, if what you're saying, which I believe you, is going to happen, then this is a non-issue and we'll have the money and we might even be able to put the license up to the full phase three. So I think it's a choice and we can say, yes, we care, we care and we want to do it, but we did nothing year one, we did nothing year two, and this is going to be year three.
So my concern though is that we already have teachers jumping ship left and right for.
And volume is giving them a factor.
Yeah, they're, I mean, the teachers are leaving rapidly and we can't stop that bleeding. And I'm concerned with the message that it sends to them that we are willing to sacrifice that. So this is a lose-lose situation for everyone, just to be clear, we get that. But, but my concern only, I have to argue the other side of that and I want to. We get that. But my concern only, I have to argue the other side of that, and I want to, I want to support the support staff more than anything, because it's unfathomable to me, A, some of the conditions that they work under for the pay that they get, and the patience that they have shown in this school division, that we can't with undue certainty say to them, this is how this is happening, we have to wait and wait and wait. Like, I don't even know, I don't even have a right, an appropriate analogy. But on the other side of that, we are walking this thin ice of telling our teachers that they're not important either, and I don't know how to balance that without...
We're not saying they're not important.
But that's the message you're sending by saying we're willing to sacrifice.
We're saying we consider it.
We will talk about this again some more.
Dr. Taylor gave us a proposal.
I just wanted to add one more piece of kind of formation information. Mr. Vosberg's recommendation is based on a tax rate that is not equalized. I was at a community meeting last night where supervisors were pushing for the members of the group to advocate for an equalized tax rate. And if that were to be the will of that board, that would drastically change the availability of even 15 million dollars for this board. So we have to just recognize that.
Can I ask one more question?
So did the governor propose funds for teachers?
No.
Oh, so nothing for teachers?
Just the half a percent.
So half a percent bonus for...
And it's against SOQ-funded positions, so...
And I just want to say, absolutely, I have been fighting for the support staff for salaries, but the bottom line is, we are in a nationwide teacher shortage, and we are losing teachers. We are only funding half of the Phase 3 adjustment for our teachers as it is now.
This is not half.
About three quarters.
About three quarters. So I think we anticipate more money from the state, and we prioritize, we do the 3.8 million for all of Phase 1 first, and then we do the last 2.7 million for the teachers. I think...
Okay, we'll talk about it. I'm not cutting you off, but I know we have closed session. We can take like a two-minute break to get food or go to the bathroom. We'll do closed session, and then we can talk.
You may want to have a motion to go into closed session really quick so that you can do that.
Well, do you want to do that while, okay, I didn't think we wanted to be out there leaving after we read in.
Never mind, Ms. Randall's going to do that.
Mine, you want to read it?
It is right out the door, to the left.
Should I take it?
So go to get food and then...
Uh, yes.
That's what I heard. I heard food. I stopped listening after food. I have to have my friend help.
...of the Code of Virginia to discuss and/or consider the acquisition of real property related to the construction of High School 6 and Elementary School 18, and for the construction of an elementary school and/or middle school where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye, oh yeah.
I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Okay.
I understand that it's part of the discussion involves a land owned by a client of my firm. My firm isn't representing them with respect to any transaction here.
That pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, the closed meeting of the School Board of Stafford County on February 13, 2024, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
We have a roll, roll call? Dr. Chase?
Agree.
Ms. Guy?
Agree.
Ms. Halsted?
Agree.
Mrs. Healy?
I abstain.
Mrs. Randall?
Agree.
Mrs. Sigmund?
Agree.
Dr. Warner?
Agree.
Madam Chair, the motion passes 6 to 7.
Do we have any action coming out of closed session?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the School Board authorize legal counsel and staff to initiate quick-take condemnation proceedings for the acquisition of an ingress egress easement for a public road on Tax Map Parcel 44-62, 606 square feet, and an ingress egress easement for a public road on Tax Map Parcel 44-62B partial, and an ingress egress easement for a public road on Tax Map Parcel 44-62C, including, A, providing the required 30 to 45-day notice to the owner of the School Board's intent to file a certificate of take if negotiations remain at an impasse; B, filing the certificates of take within that 30 to 45-day period as applicable; and C, if necessary, filing notices and petitions in condemnation within the time required by law.
Second. Cast your votes. The vote passes with six yes and one abstention, which was Ms. Healy.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to move that the School Board authorize legal counsel and staff to engage in negotiations for the acquisition of property for use as a school site, and to return to the board for review of the negotiated contract terms for approval.
Second.
Cast your votes. Motion passes 6 to 1, to 0 with 1 abstention. Ms. Healy abstaining. Going to call our regular business meeting to order, and if we'll stand for the presentation of our colors and the pledge allegiance.
Color, attention, present. Cut. Ready, cut. Aye.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, cut. Ready, cut. Right turn. Port. Color, hold. Fall.
Wanted to thank Mountain View High School's Marine Corps JROTC. Members of tonight's color guard include Levi Brooks, Benjamin Kitchens, Christopher Cam, and Cody Johnson. The instructors of the Mountain View High School JROTC program are Sergeant Major Tanner and Lieutenant Colonel Barnes. Thank you, everyone.
You know what's happening here? Your mouse is backwards.
Ms. Mergo, if we could take them off, roll.
Dr. Chase? Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
Ms. Duku?
Present.
Ms. Odotogen. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We do not have to authorize anyone to participate electronically. I understand there's an amendment to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Motion to amend the agenda to add Item 3.01 from the work session to request to discuss the conveyance of a 1-acre parcel of land to the county for a dog park in the Hampton Oaks area. This is just for information only.
Second.
So Madam Chair, would this be added to...
Action.
Under action or under information?
It would be under action for an information, 9.06.
We don't have information anymore.
Okay, thank you.
And it would be 9.06. Since it's moved and seconded, any other discussion questions? Okay, we'll cast our votes on approving the agenda. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Announcement of administrative personnel appointments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very excited to announce the next principal, next assistant principal at Ferry Farm Elementary School. As I call your name, if you could please come forward, Ms. Naina Passmore will become our new assistant principal at Ferry Farm Elementary. Ms. Passmore has been a part of the Stafford School team for the past last decade, first as a second-grade teacher at Conway Elementary School, and most recently as an instructional technology resource teacher at Rocky Run Elementary, where she has served for the last five years. In that role, Ms. Passmore has helped to lead work for both the school and the school division on infusing technology into engaging instruction. At the, and in 2021, was recognized as Stafford Schools Teacher of the Year. Prior to her work for Stafford Schools, Ms. Passmore worked as an applied behavior analyst and therapist, supporting students in both home and school settings. Ms. Passmore earned her bachelor's in psychology and her master's in elementary education from the University of Mary Washington, and completed her educational leadership and supervision endorsement at Longwood University. Welcome to the team at the farm, Ms. Passmore.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words and introduce anybody that came along with you?
I brought my mom tonight, Patty, and my sister Lindsay, who's also a teacher.
Nice.
And of course, my amazing husband.
And you're disappointed, principal? Yeah.
Surprised me tonight, so, and Alyssa's unfortunately under the weather, so she wasn't able to join us, but thank you so much. I'm excited for this honor and can't wait to be a part of the farm family, as I'm sad to leave my bone on the ground, but I'm excited for this new challenge and adventure.
Thank you so much, Ms. Passmore. Congratulations.
I know, I had to move mine too. Ooh, I like you.
Madam Chair, this concludes administrative appointment announcements for this evening.
Great. We'll move on to awards and recognitions.
Good evening, School Board members and Dr. Taylor. This evening, we will recognize students, staff, and community members that epitomize our values of students, integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence. Will Savannah Lern and Matthew Gata please join us at the podium? February is annually recognized as Career and Technical Education Month, highlighting the pivotal role of CTE programs in shaping students' path towards successful careers. Stafford Schools' Work-Based Learning Program, an exemplary initiative, immerses students in practical applications, expanding their knowledge and skills. These internships not only establish a crucial connection to the Stafford community, but also contribute significantly to building a resilient workforce for the future. Accepting the proclamation declaring February as Career and Technical Education Month are two shining examples of our work-based learning team in action. From Shehe Toyota, Parks and Service Director Matthew Gata, and from North Stafford High School, Shehe Intern Savannah Lern. Thank you for demonstrating an outstanding commitment to education and community enrichment. Will Sydney Miller and Giovanni Green please join us at the podium? In acknowledgement of the annual observance of Black History Month throughout the United States, we gather today to recognize and celebrate the profound contributions of African-Americans in shaping the rich tapestry of our nation's history. This month serves as a tribute to the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions that have influenced and enriched our society. Accepting the Black History Month proclamation are co-presidents of Colonial Forge High Schools Black Student Union, Sydney Miller and Giovanni Green. Thank you, Sydney and Giovanni, for your service and leadership. Will Adam Ahmed and Angeline DeGonzo join us at the podium? Stafford County Public Schools has swept the Region 3 nominations for the U.S. Department of Education's Presidential Scholars Program. Colonial Forge High School seniors Angeline DeGonzo and Adam Ahmed were selected for candidacy based on exceptional SAT/ACT scores, written essays and self-assessments, school reports, and transcripts. Both students demonstrated excellence in academic achievement, personal characteristics, leadership and service activities, and an analysis of their essay. Both will compete to earn semifinalist status in April with U.S. Presidential Scholars officially named in May. Unfortunately, Angeline is out with the flu today, and we wish her a speedy recovery. Adam and Angeline, we cannot wait to watch you soar. Congratulations on this incredible recognition. Will Mountain View High School DECA officers Marin Keplinger, Aleah Bariero, Delaney Hinson, Courtney Morris, Cole Walker, Claire Petska, Isabella Seffa, Emnet McConan, Kathy Allen, Erin Vanes, and their advisor, Mr. Jason Williams, please join us at the podium? Mountain View High School's DECA chapter has achieved the prestigious Thrive level in all four chapter campaigns showcasing excellence in community service, membership, ethical leadership, and promotion. This accomplishment places the school among the select group of about 15 across the entire Commonwealth of Virginia. Club President Marin Keplinger will represent Mountain View High School's DECA program at the International Career Development Conference in California to accept the award. Additionally, program advisor Jason Williams will be honored with a Gold Level Outstanding Advisor Award at the state competition in Virginia Beach. In recognition of these remarkable achievements, Mr. Williams and the club's officers were presented with Certificates of Excellence on behalf of Mountain View High School DECA. Next week, our chief academic officer will recognize all students in the Mountain View High School DECA program during a ceremony at the school. All right, we're going to squeeze in. I'm going to make two rows. Perfect. I'll send it to you. Will Chris Fulmer, Lisa Goumair, Brenda O'Brien, Joy Yuri, Katie Latandra, Cynthia Fortin, Wendy Martin, Barbara Frosted, Rita Brooks, and Kimberly Washington, please join us at the podium? Stafford Schools takes immense pride in honoring the finance staff for their exceptional dedication, expertise, and hard work during the recent financial audit. Your unwavering commitment to maintaining the highest standards of financial integrity and accountability has resulted in a flawless audit. The absence of any instances of noncompliance or matters required to be reported under government auditing standards reflect your meticulous attention to detail and exemplary professionalism. Your contributions have not only safeguarded the fiscal well-being of our public agency, but have also showcased your steadfast commitment to serving our community with transparency and excellence. In recognition of your significant achievements and invaluable contributions, we proudly present you with a Certificate of Appreciation as a token of our gratitude and admiration. Squeeze.
That's a lot of words for saying perfect audit.
Yes. Ms. Mergo, will you join us at the podium? In observance of School Board Clerk Appreciation Week, we extend our heartfelt acknowledgement to the dedicated individuals who play an instrumental role in the success of our educational community. This week serves as a special tribute to school board clerks like Missy Hall and Angie Mergo, whose tireless efforts in supporting staff, the community, and the school board are truly commendable. Accepting the proclamation is our devoted Deputy School Board Clerk, Ms. Angie Mergo. Missy and Angie, on behalf of the school board and the staff, please accept our gratitude for your outstanding service. Thank you. And now will all of our school board members, please join us at the front. Stafford Schools is proud to celebrate School Board Appreciation Month this February. We join communities all over Virginia in thanking our school board members for their service and dedication to public education. The theme of this year's celebration at the Heart of Education, our school board, reflects the leadership of our board members as they serve our students and staff, advocating for public education with local, state, and federal leaders. In an often thankless position, school board members must develop policies and make tough decisions on complex educational and social issues impacting the entire community. Our board members bear responsibility for an annual budget of four hundred and fifteen million dollars, four thousand three hundred employees, and approximately forty buildings. Their dedicated leadership ensures effective governance and decision-making, shaping a positive learning environment for the community's students, and fostering the growth of Stafford's educational system. Ladies, we thank each of you for your service and applaud every one of you. Thank you.
So for the audience, we don't normally do flowers at school board meetings, but, uh, but today in recognition of our, our board members, we have flowers at their, at their stations on the dais. It's a thankless job to be a school board member, but we so appreciate you for all the time and effort that you put into the school system, the kids, and the community. Thank you so much.
Next item on our agenda, item six point one, Stafford Education Foundation Annual Report.
I'll let everybody run out before I start. I can't agree enough with Dr. Taylor's comments. It is a thankless job, and I want to thank, oh, what, um, sorry, I can't lean in any further. And I want to thank all of you for your service to this county. Really appreciate it. Ms. Angie, thank you. And Ms. Missy, who was not here tonight, thank, thank you for, if you would pass that on to her, that would be great. I am Stephanie Johnson. I am a resident of the Acquah District. I am a resident of Stafford County for twenty-two years. Both my kids went through Stafford County Public Schools. I have spent about the last twenty years dedicating myself and supporting the students and teachers of Stafford County Public Schools. I say all this to let you know I'm embedded in this community. I co-own a business here. I run my own business. So we are, we are a family of Stafford County. And again, I say that because we are truly, my family is truly embedded in this community. But today, I am here to update you on the Stafford Education Foundation. I was a charter member of the foundation many, many, many moons ago. And I was proud to do it as just an involved parent back then. From then until now, it's what the foundation was built on, was just to support teachers, to support kids, and to provide that bridge between gaps. And we are still doing that today. So, a fresh start is a fresh, is a journey, a journey that requires a plan. That's one of the big things that the foundation has done this year. We contracted with the Growth Coach, who walked us through, and I think all of you have been in a strategic plan situation for Stafford County Public Schools. So you know it's a challenge. And we did spend quite a bit of time just truly slogging through, who are we? What do we need to do? And how can we best support this school district? So, we had our last meeting just a little while ago. We are working on tasks within goals and, you know, uh, how to evaluate where we are and what we're doing. So we will be sharing that probably, isn't it heck to be short? So we'll be sharing that out on our webpage at the beginning of our next fiscal year, which is in July. Here's some of the things that we've done. You all know about the Innovative Teaching Grants. Last year, we gave fifteen thousand six hundred dollars to the teachers in Stafford County Public Schools. Currently, we're working on a matching grant so that we can effectively help more and more teachers within our school district, let them rise to the level of creativity that we know they have by providing them some funding for some innovative, uh, teaching. Reflect Stafford. This was really, really a wonderful program, and I'm gonna have to do a big shout out to previous chair, Pam Young. She was able to hook the foundation up with a funder for Reflect Stafford. This, this cycle, um, there are six recipients whose tuition is being paid for by the foundation through a grant by Silver Companies. They will be getting their licensure, and it will be paid for. These are folks who want to be a teacher. They are going to increase the diversity in the classrooms because as we know, kids learn best from people that look like them. And, but they just didn't have the means to do so. And I'm so happy that Pam provided us, or Ms. Young, provided us with that opportunity to provide that to these already staff members of Stafford County Public Schools. Future Educator Scholarships. This is a big shout out. Future Educator Scholarships are open right now, so any, any graduating senior who is looking toward a career in education, please hop on our website and, and apply. The Champs Program, the Champ Program that will be opening at Brookpoint. This is just such a point of pride for us. I was able to find a funder through some other connections with Stafford Hospital and Mary Washington Healthcare to find a funder to create this program. We are so incredibly pleased to be part of this journey. And I'll be working directly with Dr. Davenport in order to make this go through and make this be a success and provide this vertical pathway to a career for our students. It's really important. Best Delegates Model UN, gonna have to call out, past Chairman Young, again. I called her, I said, I need five thousand dollars. And she went, hmm, let me think. Two days later, she had a funder for the Best Delegates Model UN. Wow, I think Lisa Arthur almost fell over when I, when I told her to send me the bill for the program. So, yeah, another incredibly wonderful program that we were able to assist with. The last thing, investment policy. We have held in the foundation a number of scholarships and funds that people have asked us to hold on to in order for them to, to provide scholarships and grants and things like that. These are private folks who wanted to create a fund. Last year, at the end of last year, calendar year, we finally got an investment policy together and are now able to truly call them endowments. So we're very excited about that. This is a lot of stuff with money attached. We, our golf outing was one of the best this year. And so very excited about that. Again, there's the Future Educators, six thousand dollars directly to the School of the Students' Choice. Innovative Teaching Grants, fifteen six. We'd really like to double it, so anybody out there who's watching, or, you know, anybody out there that would like to just pop another fifteen thousand in that account, I would really appreciate it. Model UN, and of course, the Claude Moore Scholars Program that is supporting the Champ Center is a hundred and sixty-six thousand over four years to create this pathway. All right, what's next? You guys are gonna be getting this. A lot of our stakeholders will be getting an engagement survey. We're at that point now where we really have to hone in on exactly what it is that these stakeholders are looking for the foundation to do. We have a new webpage, which is very exciting. Our communications board member, Chandra Gore, and I are building on our new webpage. We're all excited about it. In two thousand twenty-three, we purchased a donor management system. It is donor perfect. This will allow us to be transparent and accountable for the funds that come into the foundation. And finally, I was appointed the interim executive director. And I, I'm gonna say it again, interim. So that is one-year commitment. I'm excited to see what I can do to elevate the foundation from this, uh, this point forward. And this is our board, this is our board. Unfortunately, none of them were able to come in this evening. And I do have to apologize to Vernon Green, who is also on this board. Yet his picture and his name are not on this slide. But then again, he's on a cruise, so, you know, there it is. Okay. I'm not even gonna do it. It's out there already, you know? I'm, I'm actually hoping that somebody is texting him right now. So, how can you support the Education Foundation? This QR code, and I don't know if this breaks rules or anything, but get your phone out right now and scan this code. Just get on our information list. And I invite everybody in the audience as well to please pull out your phone. It is name, address, email, phone number. Boom, and you're done. We need to elevate the, the visibility of the foundation within this community. We are doing so many great things. Yet if I walk into a PTO meeting and I go, hi, everybody, I'm Stephanie Johnson. I'm from the Stafford Education Foundation. And they go, oh, the teachers' group associate, no, not the SEA, I'm the SEF. So please, um, get on our information list and pass the word. And please, support our donors. They are the ones who create this magic for us. And with that, um, thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I have about seven thousand email addresses. JohnsonS@StaffordEducationFoundation.org is probably the best one to hit. So, thank you.
Uh, moving on to six point zero two, FY twenty-three Annual Audit Report and Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Good evening. I'm just gonna introduce Mr. Mike Garber, who is our audit kind of in charge, or partner in charge of our audit from PB Mayor's LLP.
Madam Chair and members of the board, good evening. As I have watched all of the recognitions in the finance group this evening, and I know in my household, it is obvious that women do rule the world. There has, there has been a lot of recognition. And, and everything has been well deserved. It's great. And, and Dr. Taylor, I'm done. All I have to say is, perfect audit. Is that, is that the quote that, that we heard for the finance team? I will give you a very high-level and brief overview of the audit. Of course, we're talking about June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three's audit. We're already seven months into this year, and we're already looking at budgets for next year. And so this is, uh, very historical in nature for, for this group to be thinking about. I believe everything was sent to you ahead of time electronically. I am sure you jumped right to the section of the financial statements and just started going through page by page. But if you didn't, we did render an unmodified opinion on the financial statements this year. And that is, of course, the one you're looking for is a clean opinion, opinion, which means we did not have any issues and could render that unmodified opinion. We also issued a clean report on internal controls and compliance for the school board. And of course, we issued a report on the single audit in the federal dollars as well. And that report also had no findings for the school board. And I believe, as, as was mentioned earlier, a budget of over four hundred million dollars, give or take a couple ten here and there. For an entity of this size, for us to come in and do our work, for that many transactions and the volume that we go through, for us to have no entries, to know findings is, is remarkable. The finance team that you recognized is well deserving of that recognition this evening. And, and I think all the time, they, they do a fantastic job. When we're here, the observations that we need to make, the inquiries we, we have to do, the documents that we ask to look for, everything is provided to us. It's provided timely. It's provided to us fully. And so we really appreciate everything that they do to help us get the audit finished. We had no past adjustments. We had no issues dealing with management. All these things that were required to say, we have done so in a document that was dated probably back in December. But I think it's important to mention those things here again this evening, that we really didn't have any issues performing the audit for last year. I think there was a management letter provided, but it really only discusses the upcoming accounting standards that, that we have to adopt in the future years. That's really all that was in there. So with that, I really don't have much else I think I should go over, but I am happy to answer any questions, observations, or comments that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
And if you come across any later, I am happy to answer them as, as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item six point zero three, Midyear Operating Fund Financial Report for FY twenty-four.
All right, so, jumping right into two thousand twenty-four now. So now we're changing years. And just to be clear, so that was our two thousand twenty-three audit. This is our two thousand twenty-four fiscal year budget, which we're looking at now. And then later tonight, we'll approve a two thousand twenty-five budget. So I'm hitting all three years, you know, before, after, and, and current years. So we're gonna go through a few items today. I wanna just touch on just enrollment and how that impacts our, our revenues for the year, which it impacts us well, even though we see some other changes in state revenue. So first of all, we projected September thirtieth enrollment, what Mr. White does, at thirty thousand nine hundred and seventy-two for this school year. We ended up coming in over that, about a hundred and fifty. And then on top of that, since September thirtieth, which is our official count date, we've added another hundred and fifty-ish kids. It's between September thirtieth and the end of January. And that's normal. Throughout the course of the year, we're gonna add students. And then over the summer, we'll add a few, getting up to the about six hundred-plus total that we'll add from September thirtieth of this year to September thirtieth of next year. The state looks at average daily memberships and not just your total enrollment. We budgeted at thirty thousand nine hundred and seventy-two, which is not what the state had in their calc tool that was out last year. We usually look at that based on our enrollment projections and adjust that. So we were, and honestly, in the eleven years that I've been here, we haven't actually hit our ADM spot on like this. So really excited about that. The state actually projected us a little bit higher on total ADM, and we felt it was better maybe to back that down a few students. And so with their mid-year update, we are spot on. So, so happy to say we did everything we could to project state revenue as closely as possible. However, unlike last year, we're actually maybe seeing some adjustments to, or like last year. or like last year, uh, when I gave this mid-year update, we're gonna see some adjustments in our state revenue for FY24. This isn't because of a cultural error this time. This is actually because of decreased sales tax revenue that the state is seeing. So every division is gonna probably see drop in their, um, projections for state revenue. So the impact to us is about 1.4 million dollars that, um, is kind of unaccounted for in revenue now on the state side. And just so you know, uh, just a reminder, you know, state funds makes up about 60% of our budget, which is about 250 million. And so we'll be about a million and a half short there. Uh, so some other areas that we monitor too is federal revenue per, on our operating fund is primarily impact aid revenue. Um, over the years, actually since COVID, we've seen a decrease in the survey results being returned to us. And then overall, with the survey results seeing a reduced number of federally impacted students. It's not a huge drop off. We were actually very fortunate that, um, our highest year ever was right before COVID. And then the state used that number to fund us for a few years. So we saw pretty big, um, steady kind of increases or steady, um, revenue on the impact aid side. And so last year was the first year we went back to having to do our forms again. If you recall, last year, we tried to do all electronic and we did not get a very good response rate. We had to follow up with some paper forms this year on our impact aid. We did all paper from the start. We got a better, uh, response rate. So we improved our response rate this year, just still haven't caught back up to that big impact aid number we had from pre-COVID. And on the other local fund side, uh, there's a little bit of an offset here on our expenditure side, I wanna point out. But, um, as, um, as schools and students pay into, um, take like testing fees, that's our, our biggest shortfall in our local revenue. Um, you know, they pay to take AP exam, dual enrollment exam, or dual enrollment course, um, and IB fees. Uh, they pay into the school and the school, uh, pays that into, uh, the central office budget where we cut the check for all of these fees. Um, so, uh, we're seeing a decrease over there on what we had originally budgeted on our operating fund side. Not a big concern there. Usually it means there's an offset on our expenditure side, which there is a little bit. But it's also, we still have some ESR money that's covering some of those fees because part of the reason we don't collect and don't have a hundred percent offset is because of some of our free and reduced students. Uh, and with the ESR money, we've been, uh, using that to offset and help there. So total revenue, uh, projected deficit is just shy of 2 million at 1.9. Um, so a, as you all know, budgeted expenditures, the bulk of it is our comp and benefits, makes up 85% of our budget. Um, just a quick kind of recap on, um, percentage of our budget. What's, you know, 85% is comp and benefits. We've only expended 44% of that. And you say, well, we're halfway through the year, so why isn't that at 50%? Um, and I explain this every year, uh, but, um, because of the way our accruals work with payroll, um, we actually will pay all the way into August. So we actually, even though we're six months into the year, we've only had five months of pay. So we have to get caught up a little bit, um, so that this is not unusual at all. And, um, purchase services, a lot of times because of the way school divisions work, a lot of the is kind of front loaded in, uh, in the summertime as we ramp up for the school year. So you'll see, uh, some things, materials and supplies. Uh, we're gonna purchase that leading up into the school year. Um, and then, so we're not having to purchase as much at the end of the year. Uh, really, you know, kind of excited to, to show this is like the bright spot. We looked at this last year as well, was our first year, um, in as many years that I could remember, that our average years of experience for teachers went back up. So we had been on a trend of going down. Um, happy to say that for two years in a row, continued to go up. So last year, the downside of that was it was costing us more money. So that's a trade off we'll, we'll always take is we can get better teachers, more experienced teachers, um, that, that will do that and will pay the additional funds. And so it's another, um, uh, value of our, kind of our teacher pay scale implementation that we've done is it, it has helped us retain and attract more experienced teachers. Uh, just for, uh, for your reference, also gave you the breakdown of our years of experience, um, where they're at, at each level. I wanna point out that last year that, um, uh, we adjusted our FY24 budgeted expenditures to reduce our salary lapse number. Um, so last year, because of this increase in experienced teachers, we actually saw an increase in our payroll expenditures that we hadn't budgeted for. So we adjusted that in FY24. Um, so happy to say, even with the increase in those expenditure lines for payroll and the more experienced staff that we have there on our license scale, we're still looking at potential savings on the payroll side of about 1.5 million dollars. That's actually not a ton of money. Um, and it's still early, so that's only through, um, the January 1 payroll, starting to do the calculations on our February payroll. So feeling, feeling pretty good about that. They takes into account all of our mid-year adjustments. Uh, but we'll continue to track that. And the closer we get to the end of the year, uh, the more comfortable we get with that number. But, um, the same staff that were here tonight do a great job at, um, helping us project, um, those payroll, uh, savings or just total costs for the year. Also have some other kind of non-compensation items. Wanna point out, our legal fees have definitely gone up this year. We had, um, for several years had kind of seen where we hadn't hit our total legal fee budget, which is around 180 to 200,000 dollars, give or take the year. Um, and we would always come short of that. And this year, we have kind of already hit that budget and exceeded it at mid-year. So we're having to, um, put some funds into there to offset it for the rest of the school year. Um, a lot of that is to do with, um, some, we, we have some special education cases. That's not abnormal. We have some land, uh, cases that we've been working on that have caused those, um, to kind of steadily increase. I think we'll start to see it level off next year, depending on, uh, what type of actions we take in the, in the coming year. Uh, just wanna point out too, it's, it's something we looked at last year was our transportation charges and our fuel charges. Last year, we were seeing those, um, increase. Think, you know, still early, so we always have fluctuation in fuel prices. But right now, we're projecting a little bit of savings there and our total fleet charges. Even though we've increased our buses and the fleet, um, it's actually seen a decrease in our charges because we're not trying to keep every bus on the road. And so, um, last year, as we were short buses, whatever we would do, even if a bus was 17 years old, we might still pay 20,000 dollars to keep it on the road, uh, because we needed that bus. And so now that we have a little bit of a reserve, um, bus fleet, if a bus is, has 300,000 miles on it and the engine blows, we're not trying to replace the engine on that bus. So it's caused a little bit of an offset there. So kind of just in summary on the operating fund, looking that we're gonna balance pretty well. Um, I will say, I know that on the expenditure side, if everything else holds true there, um, there's other savings we have in account for the year. Whenever we get close to the end of the year, there's more savings will pop up. We know that we don't spend every dollar out of every budget line. So we'll start to sweep those up as we get closer to the end of the year. So I feel, feel, um, pretty comfortable. I will say, I don't expect, um, you know, three or four million dollars that we're gonna be allocating in, in May and June towards three hour projects that we can try to get done this summer. So, um, we'll have another, um, kind of tight year at the end of the year. But unlike last year, I don't think we're gonna have to make any drastic changes to try to meet, to meet, um, and have a balanced budget at the end of the year. So, uh, just really wanna, uh, quickly touch on our other funds as well because operating fund is one that guy kind of gets all the love and attention, but we do have other funds. Um, so really quick, just kind of mid-year update. Kind of plan for nutrition was to have a deficit because they had a big surplus. They have a fund balance that they've accumulated over the last several years. So actually built into their budget this year was to have a deficit. So that's kind of going according to projection. Fleet, looks like it will break even, uh, pretty even there. Workers' comp, we're seeing a saving. So even though you see a deficit, um, on the box on the right there, uh, it looks like a deficit as of mid-year. Actually, projected surplus is about 750,000 dollars. And that's just the way we do our transfer is we wait until mid-year and then we do the transfer into the fund, out of our other funds. So, um, that's where we actually made a change in our insurance coverage last year and went to a fully, um, insured workers' comp policy. And so we're actually seeing savings there that were flowing back into our other funds, which is already built into the, the budget that, um, you would approve tonight. On the health benefits side, uh, currently at mid-year, I'm looking at a deficit of about 1.8 and projecting that to be about a deficit of 2.4. They do have, um, fund balance in our health benefits fund. This is another one that we intentionally budget very, very tight and assume that we'll have a deficit because of the, the large fund balance we have there that we've carried over from year to year. Um, that accumulating that balance has kind of let us, um, play that very tight as we budget for it. So I, we're feeling okay about it, um, both of those funds. So for health benefits, um, and grants, which I don't touch on grants because they very much follow, uh, the way the grant award works and, and they're over a multi-year. Usually some of our grants, um, are funded over three years. Uh, so it's kind of hard to do a mid-year update on grants. Um, but health benefits and grants are actually going to exceed their appropriation. So there are funds to cover them, but we need to ask the county for additional appropriation. And that's on your action item tonight is to increase the appropriation in those funds. To be clear, we don't need any additional funding from the county. Uh, this is, um, normal, especially when we run, run a tight budget, uh, in our funds that sometimes we go over. We have the cash available in those funds. We just need it. I just wanna point out, you know, some good trends that we're seeing, especially with the grants is, um, is we did see an increase in our title awards and, um, we're trying to spend those final ESR. So another reason we're doing better on our comp and benefits is we have a lot of title funds, especially for special education teachers, our Title VI grant. That award increased over our budgeted amount this year. Um, so, um, that's helped offset some of our special education teachers that we have in our operating fund, which has helped to generate some of those savings. Um, and then the last, uh, kind of tricky thing, this is definitely new to everybody, uh, is we have the Academy of Technology Innovation, so the lab school. The school board is the fiscal agent and they did a, you know, a planning grant last year. Uh, but now they're moving into, um, their actual implementation grant. And so they've already been awarded this grant, um, and this 1.6 million would be from March till June. Part of your actual budget approval, um, new this year on your resolution, is a line for this eight, what we call, what we'll call the ATI fund. So you'll have a separate fund now. Um, this is very similar to how other school divisions will use their governor's school or if they have a lab school. So the school board is just the fiscal agent. You don't really control what's in that budget. These budget actually goes to the governing board of ATI, where they vote on it, which, uh, Dr. Tower will take at the end of this month. Know I covered a lot? Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Do you wanna go down the row? Dr. Chase?
So, um, the impact aid forms and, uh, you're mentioning that they, uh, they have reduced sort of a number. Um, it's been a while since I saw one of those impact aid forms, but back in the day when I saw the impact aid forms, it talked about what building you worked in. So there's a whole list of federal buildings that you worked in. With people being more remote, is there the possibility that, I mean, there's still an impact to us even if they aren't actually going into that building every day? Have there been any changes to that? Or is there, um, any clarification for people filling out these forms so that we actually do get that aid?
Um, so that's a great question. I think it's something maybe we can help clarify next year, so, uh, for our, um, parents. Because, uh, if it's their, if their base location is one of these federal properties, they still qualify whether they're working at that property or they're working remotely. So we still want them to fill it out and, and let us know that Quantico is their base location. Uh, but, um, great point. I think when we send out the communication next year, we should clarify that, hey, just because you're working remotely, please still include your base location.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our student representatives report.
Hello, everybody. So per our last meeting, me and Jennifer made it very clear that our goal for our term, this for us to represent those, would be to try and, try and get resources out there as much as possible. So in order for us to do this, we kind of had to brainstorm some ideas, but we were able to meet with, um, Ms. Sandra Osborne and Ms. Emily Smith, who helped us manage public affairs. And through our means, we were able to create a public insert account at students of Stafford. And what we're gonna be using that account for is to kind of like promote the community and help like, like enhance participation and like highlight like great like events of that week and community based things. And also what we've been doing as student representatives as well and what the school board has been doing as well. So in addition to that account, me and Jennifer are trying to kind of build our, um, engagement. And by doing this, we are trying to introduce a kind of like student representative committee in a way. So we know that we need to communicate the needs and voices of all high schools. And me and Jennifer are just from two high schools. So in order to do that, we had decided to try and find other student represent, student council members from other schools, get their inputs and kind of like designate them to one school so that we can get the inputs of their high school as well. And basically by doing that, we'll get the voices of their staff and their teachers and their kids and their students. And in order to do that, as, in order to further, like, amplify the voices of all students, because it's not just high schools, there's elementary schools, middle schools. We've kind of wanted this committee to help like go into their feeder schools and get the information from all the elementary schools and middle schoolers and what they see in the community, what they like, what they don't like in order to get positive changes and get rid of things that they don't like. Um, with this team, we hope not only to spread awareness by media, but also by visitation and going in person. So, yeah, that's what we hope. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Citizen comments. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and/or organizational affiliation. Speakers shall also announce the purpose of their topic and their comments. Uh, citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Ms. Mergo, if you could read them first couple names, please.
Yes, ma'am. Nikia Pounds, Kim Cummings, Jessica Pierce, and Kristen Payne.
I'm short too, so. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Nikia Pounds. I am a resident here at Steph, in Stafford, Virginia. My children go to schools here in Stafford. And I'll be sharing a little bit of, uh, history for Black History Month. Today, I'd like to introduce to you a remarkable African-American woman in the arts who may not be as widely known, um, but has made significant contributions. Her name is Tulani Davis and she hails from Hampton, Virginia, home of my alma mater, Hampton University. Tulani Davis is a multi-talented artist known for her work as a writer, playwright, and lyricist. She explored African-American experiences, addressing themes and identity and social justice in her novels, essays, and plays. What sets her apart in her collaboration with renowned jazz musician David Murray, where she contributed lyrics focusing on poetry, music, um, to create something unique and thought provoking. Though not as famous as some, she received critical acclaim, earning an Obie Award, um, for Best Known American Play, for Everybody's Ruby. As we celebrate Black History, let's remember unsung heroines like Tulani Davis, who's left an indelible mark on art through her creativity, deserving our recognition. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Clarissa Quinn was next.
You said Kim Cummings, right? Hi, good evening. My name is Kim Cummings. I am the Social Action Chair for the Fredericksburg Area Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, where Rida Armstead is president and Latonya Tally is the vice president. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority was founded on January 13, 1913, on the campus of Howard University by 22 college-educated women. Their goal was to extend their service off the campus and envisioned an organization committed to sisterhood, scholarship, service, and addressing the social issues of the time. Immediately following the founding of the sorority, the 22 women participated in the Women's Suffrage March in December, I'm sorry, in DC, in, of March of 1913. Despite the fact that black women were not part of the discussion to gain the right to vote, but because it was the right thing to do. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a nonpartisan organization and does not support or endorse any political candidates. However, we do have a strong legislative agenda. The sorority seriously considers the issues impacting the black community and boldly confronts the challenges of African-Americans and hence, all Americans. Currently, our priorities include educational disparities and inequities, health equity, reimagining public safety, voter suppression, supporting gender equality, and combating racial profiling. Fredericksburg Area Alumni Chapter continues the legacy of our founders. FAAC was chartered in August of 1980 and serves Planning District 16, which includes Stafford County. We have hosted and participated in various activities and donated to agencies that support Stafford County. This month is Black History Month, which we all know. This month is Black History Month, which we all know, black history is American history and should not be set apart. However, here we are. The theme for this year is African-Americans in the Arts, and I would like to highlight for you Isabel Wilkerson, the author of The Warmth of Other Suns and Cast: The Origins of Discontent. Her first novel portrays the exodus of black people from the South to the North to escape Jim Crow laws, only to find the same system created to keep black people in subordinate conditions present in the North, which led her to write her book Cast, which clarified and explained the caste system that was created in Virginia based on race to justify slavery, but that it was well established now throughout the United States. The caste system developed in Virginia was similar to the caste system in India and the playbook used by Adolf Hitler in Nazi Germany. This is the importance of teaching full history. We know that those of us in this room did not build this house, but we also cannot ignore the rotted wood that is the foundation. It is our responsibility to make the repairs. Let's do better and make sure the full history of this country is taught regardless of the painful past. Let's read books. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm a president of Embry Mill. Hello again. So a proffer is a voluntary commitment from a landowner to, or developer to reduce or eliminate the impact of new development on neighboring properties in the county. An oath is defined as a solemn promise, often invoking a divine witness regarding one's future action or behavior. Our school board members took an oath, which includes a promise to faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon them. We, I keep hearing people, to include some on this school board, say things like, "We cannot be held to unreasonable and unrealistic developer promises to their communities." I don't know who guaranteed you an elementary school in Embry Mill, but it wasn't county officials. I'm sorry if you were promised this school, but that wasn't up to them. And the list goes on. The thing is, the developer of Embry Mill made a proffer to the county for a number of things, school sites included. They built thousands of houses and this county has done nothing to plan for that growth. The promises are there for good reason and we should let them make good on those promises. As of today, I was sitting there listening to the work session at 5:00 PM and I was listening to people ask about using the money proffers for Embry Mill site at the Brookpoint site. To me, that's unacceptable. I'm a homeowner in Embry Mill and I paid $2,135 of that money out of my own pocket. There are particular board members who are intimately familiar with the proffers as the law firm owned by this member represents the developer of Embry Mill. Is this not clearly a conflict of interest? It would seem so given the abstention that took place today. Finally, who does the school board really represent? The developer or the constituents? Why did the same board member abstain from voting on the transfer of 1.3 acres of the Embry Mill school site to Dominion for a power line easement in 2009, for which the school district received $40,550? Because as noted in the board minutes stated February 23, 2010, the member could not vote due to representation of that developer as they own the law firm. So why did that board member then vote on the Embry Mill site? Not once, but twice. And board meeting minutes for April 11 and May 9, 2023, both show that board member attended closed sessions regarding the property and then following the session voted both times against building on the Embry Mill site. The reasons for the votes were never divulged despite being asked, which leaves us only to be able to speculate due to the lack of transparency. As a parent, I made a promise to myself to always do what is in the best interest of my children. I did not take an oath that requires me to do what is best for the county despite what some of you may think. So I won't apologize for advocating for an elementary school in Embry Mill for our kids, but I do promise, people are watching this board closely and we see the lack of transparency, the unwillingness to work with the board of supervisors, a stubbornness to be right, and inappropriate comments being made on social media by some members. Does that behavior align with the oath? I invite the members of the school board to seriously think about that question. Is integrity truly present here? Because it's time to focus on how to make Stafford County a better place for the children and your constituents, fulfill the meaning of the oath. I really wish people wanted that more and not just to be right. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kristin Payne. I'm speaking on behalf of the, all the administrative assistants that are currently employed by Stafford County Public Schools. Drew Middle School has been my home for the last five years. I'm not only an employee here in Stafford County, but also a lifelong residence with five generations born and raised here. On top of that, I also have three school-aged children. My oldest daughter is a senior and attends Stafford High School. My middle daughter is a freshman and attends Mountain View High School. And last but not least, my youngest is a second grader at Margaret Brent Elementary. I am a single mother to these three wonderful kids, just trying to make ends meet, currently living paycheck to paycheck. Last month alone, I had to literally borrow money just from my 17-year-old daughter just to be able to report to work to use for gas. Seems as though everything in this economy is on the rise except for our pay, in which we are in desperately need of. We, as administrative support staff, are the only staff members that are, that aren't even on Phase 1 yet, while other members will be moving on to Phase 3. Our teachers are phenomenal here in this county, from the ones I work with to the wonderful ones that teach my children. I am forever grateful for each of them and very proud that they are receiving the raises that they deserve. However, administrative support staff needs to be recognized for our hard work and dedication just as much, instead of being pushed back yet again, even after we were told we would already be in Phase 1. We have been patiently waiting to receive this raise and I am beyond disappointed that we are literally having to beg to be recognized for all of our hard work that we do each and every day. We are not only administrative assistants, we are fill-in nurses, fill-in counselors, fill-in custodians, and fill-in teachers. We wear many, many hats throughout the day and we are usually the first face you see when you enter a school building. I can speak for myself, at Drew Middle School, we thrive to have a happy, loving, welcoming environment when you enter because our first impression is a lasting impression. We are the school safety and security guards, the frontline of defense in so many circumstances. We are also the ones who hold the power allowing several people into our school buildings. We are the polite voice on the other end of the phone for the hundreds of calls we receive day to day. We are the staff's go-to person when something breaks, coverage is needed, problems arise, et cetera. We are message takers and meeting schedulers. We are attendance secretaries, librarian assistants, office managers, bookkeepers, and registers. We are the ones who are in charge of disciplinary consequences and letters. We are the ones who get all the complaints from the community, parents, staff, and students. We're the bus takers and bus information relayers. We tend to be the buffer between parents and teachers, parents and administrators, as well as students and teachers. This is just a few examples of the many things that us administrative support staff do. We literally do anything and everything behind the scenes to keep our schools up and running effectively on a daily basis, all while keeping our community, students, and staff safe while inside our school buildings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next are Matt Pruitt, Tangela Jenkins, Charlotte Jones, and Robert Rowlett.
Good evening, Board. My name is Matt Pruitt and I live in Embry Mill. I'm here tonight to raise concerns about the decision-making process for the location of Elementary School 19. While we've entrusted our school board representatives with the important responsibility of choosing sites for new schools, I am concerned with the lack of transparency in the board selecting the location of Elementary School 19. Rather than engaging the community in the decision-making process through planned activities, the school board opted to build Elementary School 19 in the parking lot of Brookpoint High School after a series of closed-door meetings, leaving us in the dark about the reasoning behind their choice. This lack of transparency has led to a sense of distrust within the community and I find the lack of opportunity for public input unacceptable. I believe it is essential for the school board to consider the pushback from the community, which should prompt a pause and reflection on the decisions being made. I've yet to hear any concerns about the location for Elementary School 18 because that location clearly resolves the overcrowding of schools in the southern part of the county. The location selected by the school board for 19 does not provide the same type of clarity. I've been told by members of the school board that the school is being constructed east of I-95 to pull kids from Garrisonville back to the Akwaiya District. Despite seeking clarification on multiple occasions, I've yet to hear how the school at Brookpoint will truly alleviate the overcrowding in Garrisonville schools. The crucial question here is whether the relocation of students will ease the overcrowding of schools in the northern part of the county. I believe it will fall short. This decision appears to be based on bias and preconceived notions that a school anywhere east of I-95 would better serve Stafford County than a school in Embry Mill. No amount of attacks such as calling us selfish or malicious will change the fact that building Elementary School 19 at the Embry Mill site is the more logical solution that will effectively address overcrowding in all elementary schools in the northern part of the county, mirroring the positive impact that Elementary School 18 will have in the South. I urge the school board to reconsider their decision and prioritize transparency and community input. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tangela Jenkins and I am here to present a little-known Black History fact, or not-so-little-known Black History fact, on someone who goes by the name of Dr. Gladys West. So, Dr. Gladys West was born in Southern Virginia and she spent her childhood years growing up in Dinwiddie County, Virginia, working on her family's small farm. She knew from a young age that she didn't want to become a farmer and she also knew that school would be her way out. Dr. West graduated as one of the top two students in her high school class and received a scholarship to attend Virginia State College, which is now known as Virginia State University. She graduated with a BS degree in mathematics, like myself, and later received a master's degree in mathematics from Virginia State as well. Dr. West also holds a master's of public administration from Virginia, from the University of Oklahoma, and a PhD in public administration from Virginia Tech. Dr. West began her career in 1956 at the Naval Proving Ground, now called the Naval Support Facility in Dahlgren, which is also the Naval Surface Warfare Center in Dahlgren. She was the second African-American woman hired there and one of only four African-American employees total. During her 42 years of service, Dr. West played an integral role in something that we have all used at one point in time and it is also something that is used every day. She played a significant role in the development of the Global Positioning System, known as the GPS. Admired by her colleagues for her skill in calculating complex mathematical equations, she also excelled in programming for computers. She rose through the ranks at NSWC Dahlgren and worked on a satellite geodesy and other satellite measurements that contributed to the accuracy of GPS. She later became project manager for the CSAT Radar Altimetry Data Processing Project, which is the first satellite designed for remote sensing of the Earth's oceans, for which she received accommodation for her work. Dr. West has published numerous papers and has made presentations on her work at national and international conferences. She was inducted into the United States Air Force Hall of Fame in 2018, which is one of the highest honors bestowed by Air Force Space Command. She was also awarded the Webby Lifetime Achievement Award for the development of satellite geodesy models. And in addition, she was also selected by the BBC as part of their 100 Women of 2018 and was awarded the Prince Philip Medal by the UK's Royal Academy of Engineering, which is their highest individual honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. My name's Bob Rowlett and I reside at 76 Cliff Farm Road in the Falmouth District. In 2006, the school board purchased 181-acre working farm on Cliff Farm Road as a site of the new Stafford High School. In 2010, the properties along Cliff Farm Road were added to the urban services area to enable water and sewer access to the school property. Seventeen years later, the property still remains vacant with no planned use, at least through FY33, other than as a land bank. However, the decision to add Cliff Farm Road to the urban services area has now led to a proposed development along Cliff Farm Road that will negatively impact area residents and the school property. On January 10, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for a rezoning request and conditional use permit by Gerald Properties to build 141 home, age-restricted community on Cliff Farm Road. Conspicuously absent from the hearing was any representation from the school board or from Stafford County Public School staff, despite being the largest landowner on Cliff Farm Road. Your continued inaction could very well lead to three highly incompatible land uses on this three-quarter mile stretch of a dead-end road, including an age-restricted community, rural farm properties, and a school site. Time's running out. On 28 February, the Planning Commission will hold its next public hearing for this proposed development. We ask the school board to please get engaged and to assess the negative impacts this proposed development will bring to this area and to the school property. We further ask that you work with residents on the future use of this property and the comprehensive planning that is necessary to support this use. Failure to do so will continue to have negative impacts and consequences to the county residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
The final speakers for tonight are Bill Anderson, Shannon Fingerholtz, and Dana Brown.
Well, good evening. My name is Bill Anderson. I live in the Falmouth District and I have the privilege and honor of serving as a pastor to kids and students in South Stafford. I recently had a conversation with a member of this board that challenged me a little bit to use my platform as a pastor to give voices to my students and kids about things that matter most to them. With that in mind, you'll see me here a lot more often to discuss those things. When I brought this up to them and I said, "What is something that you want the school board to know you're concerned about right now?" The number one thing from every one of my students was their changing high school schedule yet again. This next week, they are changing their lunch schedule to go from what they currently have to three-block schedules. The students across the board were, are not only very concerned with this, but very frustrated by this. We talk about how we want our kids to have stability, yet we're constantly changing the schedules. I have absolutely no doubt that there was a reason that this change was implemented. But every one of the students I talked to expressed frustration with this change. Some students expressed that they felt it was done as punishment for the actions of others. On my way in here tonight, I had one student message me saying that they are still eating lunch in their classrooms at Brookpoint, two weeks after the incident that happened there, or almost two weeks after that incident. One student described it as going to school and being like in a prison. Some students use this extra time in the previous schedule for homework. Several expressed that they use it to go see other teachers with questions and some, of course, just use it for social time. Lunch and learn, as one student called it, was Lunch and learn, as one student called it, was far better than the schedule that they're about to have, as the previous schedule gave them more flexibility. Either way, whatever you decide to do, because I know there's reasons behind this, can we please set a schedule and leave it? These kids need stability. They need to get into some kind of routine that works best for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Shannon Fingerholtz, Hartwood District. I'm gonna talk a little different than I normally do. So, y'all are very aware of my dissatisfaction with putting Elementary 19 at the, or not putting Elementary 19 at the Embry Mill location. You are very aware of my frustration with the lack of a positive relationship with the Board of Supervisors that is ongoing. And you all can guess that the prior proposed policy of 2422, now being considered as apparent resource document, is still not something I would support in the way that it is written. But today, I want to focus on you as a body of neighbors, not just as votes. Just as I hope that you will view the other speakers tonight as your neighbors and not just numbers, but people with compassion, they are passionate, and they are hurting, and they are confused, and I hope you see them as those neighbors as well. We frequently don't see eye to eye. It is easier for me to be critical when I don't have to publicly vote in front of the community, or to be the one that cuts funding to shore up something temporarily elsewhere within the county. I get a luxury you do not. This podium does not receive the scrutiny that the diocese does. Thank you for being a part of the Coalition of the Willing and for taking the barrage of "you did it wrong" all the time. Thank you for the hours outside of meetings that you spend with all of us and doing research and answering emails. Thank you for fixing your face when I say something you don't agree with. Thank you for telling me when I'm wrong, even when I swear I am not. This is democracy in its imperfect beauty. And most importantly, a huge thank you to your silent support, to the oil of the machine, Missy Hall, who unfortunately is not here tonight, which is definitely not like her. For those that don't know, Miss Hall is at all the board committee meetings, work sessions. She takes notes, she prepares documents, she gets pens, provides reading glasses, orders meals, all the things. She gets the joy of re-listening to all of these meetings again to make sure notes are accurate. She collects minutes and posts agendas for all of the citizen advisory committees. She manages our public and digital comments. There's countless things that she quietly just keeps moving along, all with a gentle smile. So, Missy Hall, who unfortunately, again, is not here, I thank you for your hard work, your kindness, and your patience. I appreciate you for who you are, what you do, and you are the embodiment of service. And also, Angie, I'm so, I hope you're, I know you're awesome too, I just don't know you as well, so thank you too. Y'all have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way in Rock Hill. That was a great speech by Miss Fingerholtz. I really liked that. I'm here to talk to you about the budget tonight, but a couple of things first. Congrats on the clean audit. I used to work in internal audits, so I know what a big deal that is. And I thought that Mr. Fulmer did a really good budget presentation. He was not boring, and his slides were easy to read, so good job. The other thing, I wanted to ask you, if you guys could please, please reconsider about moving citizen comment up higher in your agenda. There's a lot of people out here that need to go to work in the morning, and we had to wait through 24 different things to get to us, so. So, anyway, back to the budget. I've been attending a lot of public meetings lately for you and the Board of Supervisors, and I know that you're asking for another $15 million, over and above what you got last year. That's a lot, extra, again. The extra $15 million is for you alone, and that equals about six cents on the tax rate, not including anything else for the county, but just for you, because we get about $2.5 million for every penny on the tax rate. I would like you just to consider this. This is a reassessment year. I don't know if you guys know that, and that's where our properties are reappraised. Notices are going out this week. We'll probably have them next week, and I've heard the property values are up an average of 13% up again. Our current tax rate is 93 cents on real estate and a penny and a half on the fire and rescue levy, for a total of 94.5. The effective rate for the new assessments is 84 cents. The effective rate of 84 cents is what the rate is, should be, to keep the tax collections about the same as this year, to offset the increases in the new assessment values. For us taxpayers, to give you this new $15 million, the county side is gonna have to cut a bunch of stuff and would have to keep the tax rate at 93 cents where it's at now, not the 84 cent effective rate. That would result in another huge tax increase for us, starting in three months in the May tax bills. I love the schools, but not everything in the county is about the schools. We have other needs, and feels like that whenever the taxpayers, whatever we give you, it seems like you're never satisfied, even when we give record-setting funding. And it doesn't help your cause when some of your employees, some of them act like elitists with no sense of self-awareness, and they act like that our money is due to them no matter what. Just keep feeding the beast, sit down and shut up. An example of this is last year, I sat in the Board of Supervisors' chambers when Mr. Fulmer was giving his budget presentation to the board. A group of senior citizens on fixed incomes came to speak to the board to tell them how it would impact them. Stafford County Schools employee had the gall to turn around and say to the senior citizens, "The schools need the money more than you do." So, that caused a lot of anger for people in the audience and anger toward the schools. And another thing that causes some anger toward the schools is when some of you, not all of you, oh, sorry, I didn't realize, I have time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it? We're all done? Okay. Action item 9.1, Adoption of Proposed Amended Policies 1108 and 1110.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, let's cast our votes. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9.02, Approval of the Conveyance of an Easement at North Stafford High School to the Virginia Electric and Power Company, Dominion Energy.
Motion to approve.
Right?
Oh, I'm like, well, there was all kinds of computer.
Any discussion?
Yes, I don't, go ahead, you wanna, do you have?
No, you made the motion. You go first.
So, I just wanna know, like, I see what this says, but I'm not exactly sure what we're granting and what we're getting for granting it and why we would grant it. I'm just, I need a little bit more information.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. Jason Towery, Executive Director, Facilities and Maintenance. Angie, could you put up that one slide? I'm sorry. Let's see it. Yeah, got it. All right. Computer, please. Okay, there we go. So, this shows the area of the easement. It's the rectangular areas there in the front, right, there's two pieces to it, right next to Wolverine Way. So, the school board is aware that in April of 2022, there was an approved agreement to place a solar array onto North Stafford High School. The work has been progressing over the past couple of years to get to this point where they're now ready to start construction. In order to construct the needed improvements, Dominion Power needs a piece of easement up there to construct certain components associated with the facility. So, this is essentially enabling, enabling the project to continue moving forward on the timeline that the board has previously discussed. So, does that help answer a little bit of the question? I can get into some more detail if you'd like.
I actually would like, because I, this is absolutely nowhere near the actual building, so I'm just wondering what the easement is for.
Right, I think that's a similar, was a similar follow-up question to me, is just based upon where this land is. I'm just, I just need to understand a little bit better what the, because there's nothing assigned to this, but like, can you please give us this? Right?
Right, right.
Which typically, there's a little bit more incentive, but if you're telling me that the solar's piece is the incentive, I mean, I need more.
Right, so Dominion Power needs to, needs to make improvements down there to the existing poles that are down in that area. In order to do that, they have, they need this extra bit of area, but this is the improvements that are needed to enable the solar system to come online, essentially. So, it's, it's like if you were to give Cox Cable or Columbia Gas an easement to extend water, or, I'm saying, cable or gas or something to your house. So, in this case, Dominion Power needs to make improvements on their side of the electrical system so that we can tie in with the new, with the new solar system array.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah. So, Mr. Towery, when this solar array comes online, am I correct that this will generate income or reduce our electric bill? So, in the long run, we're anticipating that this will save the county some money?
Yes, that's correct. We'll see a significant savings in our regular electric bills that we have for North Stafford. I believe the overall projected savings were about $2 million over the life of the system.
Ms. Healy?
Mr. Towery, was there going to be some advantage to the students, that they were gonna be doing something with this solar program? I recall something that there would, you know, there was a benefit to the students at the schools from the program, and we already committed to the program, so I look at this as, you know, step two of implementing it. But unfortunately, you know, we all, some of us were here and some weren't when we, you know, actually agreed to this. So, if you have any information about the benefits to the North Stafford, you know, high school and its community, it would be helpful.
Thank you, Ms. Healy, and Madam Chair, members of the board. I would love to say that the $2 million is a great incentive, but it's over 20 years, so it's really not that much money in, in terms of the life of the, of the project, other than it is $2 million, and we certainly could be the beneficiaries of applying that elsewhere. There is an instructional benefit in having our kids use this as a potential study site in studying solar energy and studying power, and there is a component of our contract with the, with the solar company to provide some resources and to have some displays that reflect that.
Dr. Warner?
These easements aren't very large as far as area. They're not gonna impede any future ability to build on the property or add anything. They're just really ancillary to the solar project itself, which we already approved.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
That was my question. I'm good.
Okay. Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9.03, Approval of an Appropriations Request to the Board of Supervisors for Carryover Purchase Orders in the Amount of $18,85,286 from Fiscal Year 23 to Fiscal Year 24.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions?
Yeah, am I correct? This is just, we purchased things with money last year and they didn't, we're just paying our bills?
Correct.
Okay, just, just making sure the public understands that this is not some strange $18 million that appeared from nowhere. We're just paying our bills. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Item 9.04, Approval of an Appropriations Request to the Board of Supervisors for Various Funds.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to state for the Academy of Technology and Innovation, it's my understanding from Dr. Taylor that we are basically the bank as the fiscal agent, so this does not obligate us when we look at the MOU later this year.
But to clarify, these are grant funds, not like our funds, right? Okay, just making that clear for everyone.
Ms. Healy, you have?
I just wanted to understand, you know, where the anticipated appropriations are coming from. Is the Health Benefits Fund, is that from an excess in there, or?
Yes, it's from the fund balance, the excess that we've carried over in the Health Benefits Fund. It has about a $6 million fund balance.
Okay, and then how about the, the grant funds? If we've, if we've exceeded our expenditures, where are the extra funding, funds coming from?
So, great question. I mentioned this in the mid-year update, but, so the Grants Fund is primarily, it's a combination of two things. So, it's our ESER funds, so it's a cleanup of ESER funds that you've approved, the big ESER III funds, as we finish those up, we need that final appropriation in this year. It's nothing new. The bulk of it's actually some additional title funds that exceeded the, the budget for this year. I mentioned the Title VI B funds, which are specifically for special education teachers, and the way those work is we can't actually put an entire 100% teacher funded by the grant, so it's split up. So, we have teachers in our operating fund that are partially funded by this grant, and this grant exceeded the budget that we had planned for it by about $1 million on its own, and so that's actually helped save money in our operating fund. So, these are additional federal, the Grants Fund are additional federal dollars that we're getting the money. It's not new money. Well, sorry, it is new, new money. It was not budgeted money, but we don't need any new money from the county for this appropriation.
Yeah, I understand, and that's a good thing, that we're not asking the county for more money, but do I understand you correctly that these are grant funds that we have available that we had not budgeted for?
For the Title VI B, yes. The ESER are things that we had budgeted for. They didn't make it into the budget, because the ESER funds have been carried over multiple years, so this is kinda like that remaining balance to spend this year. And then those ESER funds are actually completely gone and spent in September 30th of this year.
So, is this a cleanup after this? There's not gonna be any extra funds anywhere that we?
100%, yeah. And, and for our title funds, we're catching those up as part of the budget, so we've updated our budgeted amounts in our operating fund in FY25 to catch up for that increase. So, it was kind of a couple, we're a couple of years behind on catching up for those increases, which is why it's a big amount this year.
Because, I mean, altogether, I'm not looking at the Academy of Technology Innovation, because that's completely separate. But the Grant Fund and the Health Benefit Fund together, 6.5 million is pretty substantial figure to be, you know, exceeded expenditures.
Yeah, so, like in our Grants Fund, you know, just like, well, well, any fund, when we start the planning process for building these funds, you know, we're starting the budget process, we're, we're kinda, almost on the end of the FY25 budget process, but we start this back in June of '24, and we're using numbers that were from, you know, June of '22, '23, so now this is kind of the accumulation of a couple of years of title funds that we're cleaning up. We hadn't increased the budget in our, for any of our title funds for a few years, so we increased it in the '25 budget, and when we were doing that, we realized that we, when we looked at '24, sorry, the catch-up we needed in '24 is when we increased it in our '25 budget as well.
And what, just one final question. The Health Benefit Funds, do they carry over to past years, or is that all this year?
So, the fund, yeah, so that's all been carried over from previous years. At the end of last year, we had a fund balance of about $6.5 million. So, those were kinda like reserves that we had in our Health Benefits Fund of $6.5. If you recall, even three or four years ago, that was like a $20 million fund balance. We've used some for bonuses. A couple of times, we did some health insurance holidays, and we've got that.
What's that, OPEC? We put some into that?
Yes, we put some into the OPEB fund. Hey, great memory. So, and then, so this is still leaving us, we have about $6.5, and so we're gonna use some of that. Some of it also is just additional transfers from our other funds that will be provided into the Health Benefits Fund. So, think of that Health Benefits Fund as that bank for all of our health insurance needs, so each of our other funds pay into this fund, and then we pay all of our health insurance claims out of that one fund.
It may be helpful to provide this additional information when we send the request over. Or have you had this discussion with the finance staff?
Yeah, so, yeah, this is, actually, we took the same thing across the street to them last year, and so we don't like to budget for a potential huge savings, so trying to budget accurately, and sometimes we just succeed. And so, I mentioned in our budget work sessions that our Health Benefits Fund, just total expenditures in general, is something that we're watching, because for several years, we were, had like really successful years, had great surpluses, and just starting to see those costs come a little bit back up to the norm of what the national average is, which could be a 15, 20% increase each year. So, something that we'll be watching in FY25 as well, but we did put additional funds in for FY25.
Thank you.
Dr. Dornan, did you have another question, or was it covered? Any other questions? Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to 9.05, adoption of the school board's FY '25 local funding request for presentation to the Board of Supervisors. Motion to approve.
Second.
Do we want to specify? I know we discussed several things, several options in closed session. I would just want to clarify on the motion.
In the work session?
Yes, work session. Want to clarify that we are all on the same page with where the motion is going.
Madam Chair, I think I can add some clarity. The budget that you have before you that's been moved and seconded is the proposed budget, knowing that this is a little bit of an academic process. You are compelled to pass a budget and forward it to the supervisors by March 1, except that you're doing this with a lot of incomplete information. You have the General Assembly that is currently, right now, talking about budget. And so there's a lot of gaps that need to be filled in between now and the next several months. Your budget process actually doesn't conclude until April, so there's a lot of steps that still need to play out in this. Fortunately for us, we looked at a very conservative budget proposal from our governor that did not have anything for salaries and wages for any of our staff across the state. Actually, the most that the state's budget draft from the governor included was a half of a percent, a half of 1% in the form of a bonus. We did not think that that was sufficient. And so the direction from this board was to address compensation, performance, safety, and differentiating our school resources by staff. We do have a recommendation from our county administrator for one revenue number, and we do have a lot of growth. Fortunately for us, the growth in our student population does provide us some additional revenue and some flexibility in state revenue because it's on a per pupil basis. So the more students we have, the more revenue we have. And therefore, we're in a position right now where we can make some adjustments to compensation and benefits for staff, some adjustments to the number of staff for right now. Here's the good news. The good news is that in the next two weeks, as a matter of fact, starting this weekend, the General Assembly will start creating their budget. And their budget is poised, based on the legislation that they've already passed, to be very heavily focused on increasing support for public education. That is a huge benefit to us because it means that some of the compensation goals that you've laid out, supporting our license scale on their phased increase to their plan, supporting our service scale on their phased increase to their plan at least Phase 1, increasing salary for paraprofessionals to a minimum of 50% of the teacher's scale plus, additional differentials based on work assignment. These are all things that are very much within our reach, but they're not within our reach today. So what you have to consider today, and what I would recommend for this board, is that you adopt your proposed budget, knowing that you're going to come back in 10 days for your March meeting and take a look at the state revenue again and make another amendment to your budget. The good news is that there's a high probability that you're going to be able to accomplish all the goals that you've set out, at least on the compensation side. There's going to be a lot of staffing goals that we're not going to be able to fulfill. There's no question about that. There's going to be about $63 million worth of unfunded requests that we're not going to be able to fulfill. But it looks like your primary objective of compensation is likely to be accomplished and our very hardworking staff will be adequately compensated as a step in the process of getting them where we know they need to be, which is more competitive in this regional marketplace.
Any discussion?
So I'll start. Just to be clear, this is a lot like being asked to choose which child you're going to feed because the, looking at these numbers and, and I think we all have heard what Dr. Taylor is telling us in terms of the positivity of the outlook of the budget forecast coming here. However, year after year after year, and of course, there's several things that were said that were disappointing this evening, but year after year after year, this staff comes back to us as dedicated, as committed, as, I mean, I don't think there's a sour face out there. And so they have earned this. And so it would pain me, no matter how on paper it looks, it would pain me to approve with fingers crossed, with the hope that we could come back and adjust later on. It's, it's, I'm not, it's been keeping me up at night trying to figure out because it is truly, I think it's, it's just an unnecessary position to be in, to have to hope and wish and want. And I don't find it to be very fair to our support staff to have to sit and wait and wonder and wish any longer than they already have. So at this point, oh, those are my, those are my feelings and I, and I, you know, I guess we can all balance the, not the budget, but the rational side with the emotional side. But there is a voice that, their voices need to be heard. And it is, it would be devastating, I think, to have to look at this and have to once again forfeit in the hope, in hopes of, because I can't get out of my head what happens if it's not. And I know you've said we can come back. But then we get people here who indicate, what if even our county level or our local transfer isn't what we hoped and we've sucked up our state money? There is no answer here. Like, there's no, it feels almost unmanageable.
So no matter what, you have to come back. You will, you will have budget reconciliation several times. And so for everybody who came tonight and is sitting at home, this budget process drags out all the way through the month of April. So this is, this is not a tonight decision. This is a through the month of April process that you have to go through because there will be increases and decreases to your state and to your local revenue that you have to account for and adjust for. So whatever you do this evening, it's preliminary because that's the situation that you're in because you have incomplete information. So you, you will not get a more complete picture until these next steps occur, until the legislature adjourns, until the governor signs a budget bill, until the County Board of Supervisors adopts a budget. So you have lots of different steps that you have to account for in the next coming weeks.
So, so just before the next comment. So for everyone listening, like, I, then I can't understand why we are forced to adopt a budget before March 1st when we have, I understand, no, I get that. I get that. But the message that it sends is, it's incorrect.
It's nuts.
It's inappropriate.
It's nuts.
And it, and it's just plain out not fair. So, so, so to say that we're forced into making a budget by March 1st, that we're then going to have to go back five different times and keep these people juggling balls in the air, I mean, somebody has to see the issue with that other than us.
Dr. Warner?
We are definitely in a difficult position. The governor put a half a percent raise, not even a raise, it's in the form of a bonus, which a bonus is worthless. That's not a raise in your salary. That's a one-time offer of money, a half a percent, a half a percent. That's ridiculous. So it is, it's just, it's an insult. So I am appalled by it. But to a member on this board, we will prioritize getting our, our salary, our non-uniform salary staff to, to the Phase 1 as soon as we know the numbers. But we just, we're guessing. We're guessing what the Board of Supervisors is going to give us. We're guessing what the state's going to give us because right now, all of it's still in flux. And we're asked to develop a budget. And that's insane. It's just insane.
Are you allowed to have questions?
No, I'm sorry.
I just want to say, you just have to pay three, so we get our pay one.
Does anyone else have any other discussion up here?
You know, we're in a really bad situation because we should, it's like we're pitting teachers against our service professionals and that's not fair. I understand that and it's not fair. And I want to be a team player, but I also lead with my heart, which I know annoys y'all. And I need them to know that they matter and that they're important. And words, as Ms. Healy said, words are words. Like, I wish we could pay you more, but wishing don't put food on the table. I don't, I absolutely don't know what the heck to do because this is, this is ridiculous and we're funded to a level of negligence that we have to actually have our employees fight and beg to be able to put food on the table. This, this absolutely sucks.
Anybody else? Ms. Healy?
First, I'd like to state, this is our budget. We can ask for whatever we want. Okay? We, but in the interest of being responsible, I'm not going to increase the amount that was proposed. But as I've said from the first time I saw this, I feel very strongly that we need to get the support staff on Phase 1. Not to take away, if you, if you all could hold any comments, this really is a discussion for us and we need to be able to hear each other, but not to take away from the teachers. But the teachers got Phase 1, the teachers got Phase 2. If we were to reduce the partial Phase 3 for the teachers by the 3.8 million that we would need to put the support staff on Phase 1, it would still give us 8.2 million. And you can correct me if that math is incorrect. But it would give us a substantial amount to put towards the teachers, the licensed staff. And, and hopefully, Dr. Taylor's crystal ball is, you know, on track. And when we come back here, we'll all be smiling because we'll have more money. But, you know, as my colleagues have pointed out, we don't know what's going to happen. And to me, it is the message. And it's the message that we can't keep saying, we're going to do it, we're going to do it, we're going to do it, and not do anything. It's, 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 you use my words, it's just not fair. So when we finish discussion, I think Ms. Halsted would like to make a substitute motion or I'll second it or I'll make it and she'll second it. But I want to make sure we get all the discussion in before that.
Does anyone else have discussion? Who's, Dr. Chase?
So for me, I have a problem with pitting two groups of staff against one another. And so for me, if we're going to make a change to this budget, I cannot support taking away from one group to give to another group. I could certainly support adding. I do not feel quite so concerned. If we're going to change things, we don't have to keep to the $15 million ask to the Board of Supervisors. So I'm just not in favor of taking from one to give to another.
I would propose adding the 3.8 million that we need for Phase 1 to our ask to the county. And then if we have to adjust the budget later, we do it.
Go ahead.
I am also feeling similarly to, with Dr. Chase. I feel like putting one against another, you know, we have two groups of people that year after year give us their commitment to come back and work for us. I feel that it is important that we get our service staff on Phase 1. I feel like when we come to our work session in the first week of March, we'll have an opportunity to once again see what's coming up and see if we need to renegotiate because we also have two seven-on-seven meetings left with our supervisors that we can have a conversation with them about our concerns and about how we want to proceed. But I'm not in favor of taking from one. I don't love asking because we all know that every time we do that, send our budget over with an additional, it comes back in our face with the seven-on-seven conversation of, it's your budget and the superintendent's budget, your budget has too much, so I'm going with his because it's cheaper. And it doesn't, it doesn't look good and doesn't work good. But I have no issue and I do know, I was going to say it for my comments, but Ms. Halsted and I met with our counterparts on the supervisors this morning and had a really nice conversation, even about this, how, how would you prefer that we proceed? And the encouragement that we got was, support your staff. So I feel like, you know, we've, I know all of us has been requested by the public to reach out to our supervisors. We have reached out to our supervisors, all of us, all of them. They're not all receptive to talking, that's fine too. But, you know, this was a very good, you know, meeting between the four of us to have an opportunity to talk about budget, to talk about CIP, to talk about community. And so I feel that we're, the message that we need to say is that we're supporting our staff. And we wouldn't want them not to do that for their staff either, for the other county members. You know, our community is people first. So that's where I am.
Since everybody else is gone, I will take a turn. And I don't know how anything is going to go up here. What I am going to say is that I want you to keep advocating. Regardless of what the outcome of any vote is up here, please keep advocating. We've seen a taste of the community that wants to equalize the tax rate. The 15 million that we are working with as a working number from across the street does not come from an equalized tax rate. It comes from a number that I anticipate will be or may be suggested by the county administrator. There is an appetite in here to go lower than that. If there is going lower than that, that 15 becomes 10, 8, 5. And that puts us all, every line item on the budget at peril, at absolute peril. And then we have a lot of hard considerations to deal with, even if we get all the money we're hoping for from the state. So please continue to advocate for everyone on our payroll because none of you are compensated for the absolute wonderful work that you do in any way you touch our, our community, whether it's in a classroom, in an office, in this building, in a bus, at the crosswalk, where, on the sports field, you matter and we are trying to get you where you need to be. But we are also asking for that appropriation from people who don't understand what we do here, either in our budget or in our, in our workforce. And that is something that we need help in delivering that message. So please, continue to advocate. Ms. Guy?
Well, I'm just going to say, so I do remember, we talked at the retreat, which was an open meeting, but nobody attended. But we were there and we agreed to do something and it sounds and it feels like we're going to change that. And I just want to tell staff and Dr. Taylor, I love you guys, but I think, you know, like, and, and you can get mad at me later privately, I'm sorry.
Does anyone else have any other discussion?
I have a concern about increasing at this point the ask to the county when we know for pretty much a fact that they're not going to increase. If anything, it's going to go the other way. Our expectation of these extra funds is that they're going to come from the state. And it sounds like there's a pretty good basis for that and we're, we're going to get them. My concern with just saying, well, we'll just ask for more, is that that doesn't solve the problem. It creates a problem in our dealings with the Board of Supervisors in that we're saying, we want more than your administrator had advised us to, we, he was going to recommend more than the superintendent put in his budget and the superintendent made cuts. He did not put the licensed staff all the way to Phase 3. He was what, 2.7 million short of that? So he recognized, you know, limitations. So my preference would be to, to take the 3.8, and this is not taking from one to give to another, this is, this is us assigning funding. But to, to reduce the license projection by 3.8, add it to the support so that we can get the support on Phase 1. Again, there's no promises here. Again, there's no promises here. We, we come back, hopefully we'll come back with smiles and there'll be more money and we can do more. But if there's not, then we're, we're going to have to be cutting. And if we just say, we're going to increase the ask by 3.8, what does that look like? This is what we added, so what's going to come out? I, I just, I, I do think this is, this is a, a perception and it's a priority. And, and these are the hard decisions we have to make. You know, I, I certainly will respect my colleagues and, you know, with the position you take. But, you know, I think that it's time that we did something here. It's been three years and we're not even in Phase One. So knowing that we're going to be coming back here, I, I certainly would, you know, would support saying that the state funding increase, if, if the state funding is increased at least 3.8, we would put it back into the licensed staff. That the first 3.8 million increase that we get from the state would go into the license so that they would be where Dr. Taylor proposed them to be. If we got any more, we could even consider putting more there. But I wouldn't commit more than that because I think we have to look at the whole picture. But that would be my preference in terms of this budget negotiations that we're going to be about to engage in. And, and there will be negotiations, you know, publicly, you know, at our meetings, you know, with our counterparts, you know, overall. And, and I, I, I feel that that is in the best interest of the schools. That's my opinion. And in that vein, I would like to make a substitute motion. If it doesn't pass, then, you know, we'll go back to the original. And that would be to reduce the line for the, the licensed staff increase by 3.8 million. Increase the support staff by the, is it 3.8 million that's required to put them on Phase One? And have a footnote in the budget that in the event that state funding is in excess of what we have projected, that the first $3.8 million that we got in extra funds would go to the licensed staff. So I'll put that in the form of a substitute motion.
Is there a second?
I mean, I'll second it just so we can, so we can push forward with, with a little bit of a discussion. But.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a substitute motion. And my substitute motion is to simply increase the ask by 3.8 million.
Second.
Okay. So we will. I was, I was going to say, can we, does anyone have any discussion at all on any of the motions? And then we will vote in the orders as prescribed. Any other discussion? Did somebody?
I would, I would say that we are basing this budget on what we've been told to expect. We are not basing this budget on what we need. Because if we did that, it would be a heck of a lot more. But the 3.8 million is to compensate our staff, which is something that the county has recognized when they gave the sheriff's increased and when they've increased the salary for their own staff. Why on earth can we not ask for $3.8 million so we can increase your salaries? Why can't we do that? Because you've certainly been waiting long enough. But now we're trying to be really conservative and really careful. If I'm going to put the money into the budget, I'm going to ask the county for it because the county is where this money comes from. It's not in the state budget. The governor didn't put it there. So the only place we can get it, the only place we can ask for it is from the county. And I think that's what our responsibility is to do. So I support the 3.8 million.
So, so I can't follow that by any stretch of the imagination. Darn it, I should have gone first. I know, you're right. I'll try and be really flamboyant about it, but no. So I do just want to point out what we are, so in a similar vein of asking for the, this amount and trying to maneuver it around, we're also, we're only putting out a budget for the extra $3.8 million on the same merit of anticipating that we could come back and lower it again if the state does come through with the extra money. So I actually would sleep better knowing we put the 3.8 million up in, as an additional cost for them. And then had to take it away later on, like, oh, look, we got this extra, we don't need it from you anymore, than to have to backpedal and try and figure it out later.
You're going to have to backpedal and figure it out later, no matter what. So make, make no mistake. And, and I mean, you, you certainly can do all of these things that you're talking about. There's no question, our staff needs this and more, much, much more. It's ridiculous that, that we have any group of staff that's differentiated on one phase versus another phase. No, 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 no. They should all go together as much as possible. However, you were not allocated that amount of money. And I think the good news is you're going to have your cake and eat it too. It's just not on the timeline that you want it to be.
So I had one other.
What he means is that we expect more money from the state to cover the, the Phase One, complete Phase One for the, for, for the non-licensed staff and the salary increase for the licensed staff. We expect that, but we don't know at this point because currently the Senate and the House of Delegates have just crossed over and the budget is still being set.
So I, again, I've said over and over, I have more faith in getting the increased allocation from the state than even the 15 million locally. So that is a concern I have. I did want to kind of quash any further discussion on whether we're taking from one to take, you know, to feed another. Because quite honestly, when we did Phase Two, there was nobody here saying, you're taking from us our Phase One to give them Phase Two. Everybody knows that we're in the same boat. We are going to get what, get what we can get for everybody that we can. I wish I was one of those grabbing money machines because that's how I feel. But that's all I wanted to add. And with that, we will go first with Dr. Chase's motion that we are adding 3.8 million to our ask from the supervisors. Motion passes six to one with Ms. Healy voting no. Item 9.06. Requested conveyance of a one-acre portion of tax map property 20P-1A-S2 Hampton Oaks Elementary School to Stafford County for a public dog park. This is discussion only? This item is for discussion only?
Right. Computer, please. Jason Tower, Executive Director, Facilities and Maintenance. Madam Chair, Members of the Boards, this item was actually discussed in the work session previously. But again, this is a request from the county to consider conveying one acre of the land at Hampton Oaks Elementary School for the use of a county-owned and operated dog park. The, in discussions with county staff, the area here, if you're familiar again with the site, just to the left of the main entrance, is a currently wooded area shaded. They do not intend to clear that area. They would put up a fence essentially in that existing area and use the natural shade as one of the elements of the dog park. The, again, from talking with county staff, their desire is for the entrance, the main entrance, if you will, to this park to be directly from the road frontage there and not to direct traffic through the school site into that parking area. However, in the event that folks were to use that parking area, county staff is requesting an ingress, egress easement, effectively so that they can work with the Sheriff's Department on our behalf to keep folks from parking in there. So it's a, it's, it's kind of an odd way, but it, understandably, they're attempting to be able to enforce on our behalf essentially no parking for the dog park in that area because they understand the desire from the schools to protect that parking for, for the schools' interests. We have drafted just very recently, and this has not gone over to the county formally yet, but for the board's consideration, some elements of a potential MOU, if it's the board's will to consider something of that nature, just to discuss potential, potentially how the two parties might work together in terms of maintenance of the fence and signs and cleaning up of, you know, any trash cans, things of that nature. I will say that we have a very good relationship with Parks and Rec. We regularly interact, they use a lot of our facilities. They're good stewards of our facilities. I don't have any concerns about this from, from that standpoint, coordination-wise, moving forward. But this could potentially be an opportunity if the board wanted to convey any concerns or were so forth for the county to consider. The MOU is not necessary, but it is an element that the board could consider should we so desire to move that way. And Mr. Southall, the Director of Parks and Rec, is here if there's any questions for the county. But I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Ms. Randall?
Can you tell me, like, one of the things I am concerned about is use of parking when every elementary school, that's like their number one complaint, is parking. So how is it that we're going to help this problem from happening?
Sure. So we've had discussions with Parks and Rec staff. They're amenable to paying for whatever signage would be needed to make it very clear that this is school parking, this is not parking for the dog park. But an oddity of, if you will, the way that the law is enforced, oftentimes if we were to call the Sheriff's Department for a parking violation on one of our properties, they're going to want to know that we're the property owner or have the ability to enforce or request that the Sheriff's Department enforce certain parking issues, violations on our behalf. And so the ingress, egress easement would give them some flexibility, the county staff some ability to do that so that we're not tasked, our team isn't tasked with having to run out there and deal with parking issues from time to time. But effectively, I mean, the, the number one, or the, the first line of defense will have to be signage, right? But again, talking with county staff, they anticipate that this will largely be a park that local residents would walk, walk down to. You know, if it's on the weekend or in the evening when nobody's there, I, I could imagine a couple of cars going in there. I don't think we're too concerned about that. But during the school day, during the school operating hours, making sure that we have.
Weekend and evening hours, though, is a lot when elementary schools have their family events.
Right.
So I would be concerned a little bit that. I'm happy that there, we're going to be, they'll be helpful with the signage. But the other thing is, you know, if it's predictable, it's preventable. That's one of the sayings that my husband has given me from his time with the FBI. But I'm concerned too where the liability would be if someone has a dog that gets out and we've got children, a child gets scared, falls, hurts themselves. But, you know, they're in their school zone, they're, that's their, how is that liability going to play out? I mean, even if a person's dog is on a leash and behaving, you know, crazy or whatever and scares a child, that, that sort of thing happens. Where does the liability go with that?
Sure, great question. And that's one of the reasons why we've been working with the county to separate this off as a separate parcel. We actually have the same in Shore, in Shore VACORP. And I understand Ms. Boatwright has discussed this at some length with them. And I, I don't think there's too many issues. She may address that in further detail if needed. But effectively, if, if an incident occurred on the dog park property, which would be the most likely place because that's where the animals would be, right? Then it would just be handled through the county's insurance issues. And so that removes the liability from the schools. And that's part of the reason why we've presented it this way as being, this, this is going to be an area where there will be dogs, right? So we don't want any liability associated with what's occurring there to come back on to the schools. So, and then if, if something happened on our property, it would be handled just like it would be handled now during any, any other event that might occur, you know, at sports or, or whatever. We, we have, again, insurance and liability as a, as a division. And anytime an outside organization rents a field or something of that nature, they're required to provide insurance for that as well.
Dr. Chase?
So, so let me just say, I don't want any children getting bitten by dogs or attacked by dogs. And I don't really care about the liability. I want the children to be safe.
Sure.
So I just worry that the way that was phrased, that might be a little confusing. It's my understanding that this dog park is going to be fenced in. And so the expectation is that the dogs and their owners will be in a fenced area and our elementary school students will be, will have at least a parking lot or more between them and the dog park. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And absolutely, first priority, we wouldn't want any incidents to occur. You're 100% right.
Right.
Apologize if that didn't come out correctly. But yeah, so this area of the property is, is, is pretty well away from the regular, you know, playground areas with the kids and so forth and on the other side of the parking lot, so.
No, thank you. And, and then, and then another question I have, and this is for the board. I mean, I understand that this MOU is something we drafted. Do we want staff to have some kind of conversation with, with the county about the MOU to make sure that, that, you know?
That they'll enter into one?
Yeah.
You had a problem with that before?
Yeah. That, that there's, you know, that, that if there are issues they have with the MOU that's been drafted, that should come back to us so that we would kind of know. And again, there's a whole question of, do we have an MOU? I know Ms. Healy brought up in the, in the work session, the whole issue of, of deeding the property versus all of that.
Ms. Boatwright told me we can do a deed of gift because it's a boundary adjustment.
Okay, good, good to know.
And Madam Chair, in fairness to the county, they haven't seen any draft of any F, any MOU or had the opportunity to process any of that. This is an articulation of some of the brainstorming and some of the concerns that we heard from board members to get them down on a piece of paper. But it's a great starting place for staff and, and to enter into some kind of dialogue about what it would look like. Typically, when there's a deed of gift, there's not really an MOU. We are gifting a piece of property or we're gifting some kind of asset and there's usually not some kind of follow-up. But that being said, that, that doesn't mean that there can't be and that doesn't mean that the school system's interests don't need to be represented to, to county government.
Ms. Halsted?
Yeah, I just, I don't want our Sheriff's Department to have to be park police, parking police. They have plenty on their plates. So my only concern, I think in my mind, is, you know, well, first of all, I don't think the school can be bothered calling the cops for somebody that's in a parking spot that's on the. And again, we can't predict whether that will happen or not happen or whatever. But, but I would be fundamentally very careful about the fact of using Sheriff's Department resources for actively having to move cars and do whatever. It's just, they are way overburdened as well, just like many of us. So I just want to be really careful with that.
We have something, Mr. Southall?
Yeah. I'm sorry, yeah. We, we do not like to overburden them as well. But we don't have a lot of issues in our park. But we do have occasional where somebody's left a card or worked on whatever like that. And the board passed an ordinance to where it gives us the right to tow out of the facility. We would confront anybody that would be parking first and only. If they become belligerent or they don't want to listen to us, then we contact the sheriff's off, sheriff's office, we use their towing company and their towing rotation to actual do that for us.
Thank you for that. Ms. Guy? Dr. Warner?
Thank you. I, I walk in Hampton Oaks, it's a lovely neighborhood. And where this dog park will go, there are not going to be any services. People are not going to likely put their dog in a car and drive them to a dog park where there's no water, there's no bathrooms, and there's a bench and there's doggy bags. That's it. But this is such a walkable neighborhood, I see more kids, dogs than I see kids walking with people. And people are already walking their dogs in the front yard area of the elementary school. school. So this actually solves a bit of a problem by putting them in a fenced-in area that's adjacent to the school that we are unable to use for anything else. That's it.
Ms. Kay?
So I've spoken with staff at school because my child attends Hampton Oaks, and I see the people with their dogs all the time, and I get frustrated, you know, because there's things that dogs leave behind, and I hate it when staff has to deal with that. That being said, Dr. Chase brought up a really good point that I was already having, but it was nice to have it affirmed and that someone said it, because this, to me, in my mind, this makes sense because it's going to help the staff. And the staff, that's what they told me. I said, hey, what do you guys think? They said if this helps us even 10% to not have to deal with people's pets, you know, on our property, then go for it, since you're not giving us a parking lot. They definitely told me that they wanted a parking lot or an expansion. But, but we don't know what could come from this, right? And, I mean, I doubt there would be an influx of like 10,000 dog owners there, which would seem like some people are worried about. But could we do something where we just do it like when the Parks and Rec uses our facilities? Is that something that is just too, you know, too messy? Or why do we have to just give it to them? Can't we, like, do a trial period of two years?
You could. You certainly could allow that. I will say, to protect your interests a little bit better, it's probably better for you to just cut bait. And, and I would say that you would have some ownership responsibilities in that process as well, some liability responsibilities, some maintenance responsibilities that you would have to then flesh out and clearly articulate versus just saying, this is yours now. So it's a choice, and it's an option that's on the table for you to consider for sure. Maybe not what we'd recommend. Probably recommend that you either do it or don't do it, but...
Hampton Oaks is located in my district. When this agenda item became public, about a week ago, I reached out to the HOA. They normally have their annual meeting and invite us, but this year, their agenda is packed, so we're not invited to their annual meeting. So in lieu of that, I told them about this agenda item. They send out an email to their member, their residents, that included, "One of the key topics of discussion during this meeting will be the proposed donation of one acre of the Hampton Oaks Elementary School property to Stafford County. The purpose of this donation of land is to convert the designated area into a public/county dog park." And then it directs them to the website for more information and asks them to email me. Since about a week ago, I've gotten about 20 emails. They have all been vehemently opposed to this dog park. I was hoping Missy would be here today so I could ask her for the best and most appropriate way to make these emails available to my colleagues, because forwarding each of them individually six times might be difficult, I don't know. But I would like to do that, and I will do that as soon as I figure out the right way to do that in the legal setting. And of course, if anybody wants to FOIA that in the public, that is all available. I have them in a folder. It should be very easy to find them. But I did want to put that out there. I also wanted to use the opportunity to say that this will come back at another meeting for action, so please continue to send your feedback in along with any, you know, concerns or anything else. So that is all I have on that. Ms. Healy?
Because if you don't know, I'm a dog lover. You've all seen my pictures. They're all rescues. And I went to my first dog park in DC, and I was really impressed. So this off-leash, summer off-leash, some people take their dogs on leash, you know, we would want to make sure they could either have them on or off as they wanted. But my, my concern is this variable with public ingress egress easement. I think we, and I don't want a response right now, but I think we need to, to look at that very carefully, because if on a deed of dedication or plat, we dedicate an easement for public use, then that's exactly what it's for. You know, if we need to give some type of a limited use or a license or something to public safety to be able to access, you know, that, that's fine. But I think if we were to grant a public ingress egress easement, then that's exactly what it says. The public can come in and out. And I don't, I don't think that we have enough parking as it is, so I do not want to encourage parking of, you know, on the, on the school lots, at least during the times that school is either open or operating an activity by, you know, people not visiting the schools or participating in that activity. So that's, that's something I would want to look very carefully at and make sure that we are not creating a problem for the, the school community. Also, I suggest we go to the PTO, PTA, PTSA, whatever they have at Hampton Oaks and see if they have any comments on this. And I would suggest that this come back to the board for information again, so that it's formally on this agenda, the background information's there, and anyone that wants to come and comment, whether, you know, in the public comments or the digital comments, would have an opportunity to do that before it comes, you know, for action. But I, I mean, I'm all for dog parks in Stafford County. In fact, I'm looking forward to that one in Rock Hill that's, you know, that's, that's on the way. So thank you.
Ms. Randall?
I would just also, it was asked if we would like to direct staff to share and work with our counterparts regarding this MOU. I think I would like to, for it to, you know, go have a first look to see, A, if they're interested in doing an MOU, but also if there's any additions or deletions that they might want us to consider before we make a vote. So I think as a board, it's something that we have to direct our superintendent to do. So if everyone's in agreement with that, then I would respectfully ask him to make this available to the supervisor's side so that we can at least start having a conversation. If we need to take it to a 3-3 or a 7-07 or whatever it is to accomplish this, we can. But I definitely feel like it would be fair to direct him to have that conversation.
Madam Chair, I'm seeing the heads nod of the board. I think that that's consent.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Any, anything else? Then we'll close discussion on this item. We will move on to board member comments. But actually, oh, Superintendent, sorry.
All right. Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all the folks that came out tonight, especially our support staff. Thank you for your advocacy. We're going to need your advocacy some more. As I mentioned before, the budget process does not conclude until April. It's long, it's drawn out, there's a lot of steps to the process. We promise to keep you informed and along the way, make sure that you have all the updated information so that you can advocate effectively for all the good things that are happening. I would also like to give a huge shout-out to the Sisters of Delta Sigma Theta, who came for a teach-in this evening to share lessons from Black history. And I could not agree more, as a US history teacher, that Black history is American history. And what a wonderful treat to have folks from the community to come and share in our Black History Month celebration. We have several things going on in Stafford County to celebrate Black History Month. We've got a couple of big events at Brookpoint and at North Stafford High School, and we encourage our community to participate in that. We have a social studies showcase as well at Drew Middle School. There's like three big events that I want to bring to the board's attention and to everybody in the community's attention that are happening before the next time the board meets, that are pretty significant, and then one that's, that's happening right afterwards. The first one is, this Friday, we are having our very first Spark Conference. And our Spark Conference is about supporting our support staff and making sure that they feel the love and that they receive the training that has been absent in recent years. Being a part of the Stafford Schools' family is, is an important thing, but you have to feel support from more than one angle. It's not just in your paycheck. It has to be from a community of love. And we are so excited that we are offering that this Friday at Brookpoint. One of the lead project managers for this fantastic project is actually our deputy clerk, Ms. Mergo, who's here today, who conceived this brilliant idea and is going to bring this to our fantastic staff. Also coming up on March 2nd at Stafford High School, it will be our second annual I'm Determined Event. This is for our students with disabilities and students who have 504 plans that are transitioning to life after high school and making plans for what that might look like. There are a lot of family resources, a lot of student resources. It's a fun day. There will have guest speakers and guest events, and I highly recommend that everybody participate. One twist this year, we are doing this in partnership with Fredericksburg City Public Schools. And we are thrilled that we get to partner with a local school system that's not just ours, but that we're welcoming other friends from the neighborhood and other neighbors, not just numbers, as Ms. Fingerholz would say, to join us for a really special event. Our last year's event was, was huge. It was great. It was a great partnership with the Virginia Department of Education, and we're just glad that we get to add one more partner. And so, it brings me to my last item, and this is the, the item that happens after the board meets next time, and that is kindergarten registration. It's coming. It's time. As much as we don't want to add more, and as Ms. Halsted would say, no vacancy, but, but we have folks in the community, we cannot wait to welcome our kindergarteners to join Stafford County Public Schools. And that begins on March 6th, so the day after the board meets next. So I did say that that was the last item, but I'll, but I'll add just two more. Our fantastic finance team that was recognized this evening, I cannot say enough wonderful things about Chris Fulmer and the team that he leads. Year over year, having clean, transparent, and unmodified audits. And this is not a once-off event. It is an annual occurrence that Stafford has grown accustomed to. Having some assurance that your finances are being managed really well, this kind of goes unreported on a pretty regular basis. But Mr. Fulmer and his team manage one of the most successful health benefits funds in the state. And he does that because he has fantastic financial management skills and has a great team that supports him. And what that has been able to do, whereas other local school districts are raising health insurance rates year over year, we're not. And we're not because we've got a great fund that's managed really well. And so it's meaningless for other school systems to give a salary increase and then take it all away by raising health benefits. We're not doing that. That's not a part of what we, what we plan to do, and, and I think Mr. Fulmer did a great job of representing that tonight. So thank you for your diligent service. I am very optimistic that this board will get a chance to make a budget amendment and be able to send something over to the county that's a little bit different than what you adopted tonight and a little bit more sure-footed with, with revenues that you can count on. And I have high hopes for that, and I'm looking forward to bringing that proposal to the board on March 5th. So stick around. Budget Part 47 coming up. Budget Part 48 soon to come after that, then Budget Part 49 and so forth and so on, all the way down to April 27th. So hang on, buckle up. We've got a long road, but we'll get there. Thanks, friends.
Now, moving on to board member comments, I'm going to ask Dr. Warner to go first and do her Governance Committee report as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have someplace still to be tonight, so... So the Governance Committee met on the 8th. We revised Policy 2103, which refers to transfer students, and the reason for this change is related to the formation of the academies, and some students will now be assigned to their base school, will be their academy school. The committee recommended that they will follow the VDOE template for the superintendent's evaluation, which is scheduled for June 25th, and the discussions for it will be on 6/11. The 11th, we will be asking board members to bring notes so that we can have the comments in an organized form based on the template. Governance reviewed, the amended, or has amended the school board code of conduct, and that will be on the agenda for review next month, at the next meeting. The proposed Policy 2422 has been revised as a parent resource. The reality is, is that each new incoming governor can often set new model policies that schools, school boards are asked to adjust to. Policy has a very specific connotation. This is a resource document for parents that kind of explains some of our policies. Governance has revised its committee charter to kind of reflect what we do, which is always a good idea. And the self-evaluation is proposed for June 11th. I will be sending something to the board. This will be a facilitated evaluation with Peter Gorman, and it will be two parts. The first part will be a school board evaluation with, that's guided, and the second part will be goal-setting. I will be sending something to the board to establish an agenda and to make sure that everything has been approved. The next meeting of Governance is March 14th, and with that, I will leave you. Thank you all. I would like to thank the support staff for being here, and believe me, we, we do support you.
Dr. Chase?
Hi. So first, I want to thank our clerks, Missy and Angie, for all the hard work they do and say how much I appreciate it. This month, I had the great delight of going to Battle of the Books hosted at Drew Middle School, where we could see that Drew Middle School needs more parking. We also saw that it would really be nice if they didn't have to store their instruments in the auditorium. So while we were doing Battle of the Books, band let out and students had to bring their instruments in in the middle of the competition. So that would be great. But some of you know I'm from the Falmouth District, and we have three middle schools in the Falmouth District. They are Dixon Smith, Drew, and Gale. And I'm very delighted to say that all three of those schools made it to the finals, and congratulations to Dixon Smith for winning. Yeah. I also want to really thank folks who came out for Black History Month, and I just would refer people, we did get one digital comment from Monique Harold Watford. And so if you're interested in learning more Black history, I point you in that direction to look at that digital comment, because it was, it was quite, quite interesting. CG, I'm on the regional governing board of the Commonwealth Governor's School, and once a year, we have to vote and make a decision about who the fiscal agent will be. We pushed that decision from January to March, so I will be reaching out to board members, probably not next week, but maybe the week after, to just have a conversation about that. So I just want to give you a heads-up about that. And then I would just like to ask that, that, I don't know whether this should be a governance thing or whether this should be part of our self-evaluation, but how do we decide which HOAs we want to reach out to and have conversations with? And about what issues do we want to have conversations with HOAs about? And I think we need to be somewhat consistent in how we choose to do that. And with that, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Randall?
I would also like to thank Ms. Hall and Ms. Mergo for all of the tender care you give our board members, for all the things that we ask and then just all the things that you do. And we're surprised when we come into our seats or come to a meeting, we're like, and you did that, too? So thank you. I would also like to thank my board members, because it's School Board Appreciation Month as well, because it is hard to do what we do. I'm not easy to get along with, but neither are some of you. So I want to say, thank you. Hey, I gave myself an insult first. You sit there quiet. Thank you, though, for answering the phone each time that I call you, so that you can agree with me, disagree with me, or tell me about myself. So I just really want to tell everybody, thank you for, because everything I thought this job was, huh, it was not. So I just want to thank you, though, because I have been, I've been helped a lot, a lot along the way, and I really do appreciate it by all of you. And I also want to thank, again, as we did in our work session, we had a conversation about our legislative priorities that we put through. And because we drink water, we toasted our water bottles, because our legislative priorities that Dr. Taylor and Mrs. Boatright so nicely put together in a packet, that when we sat down as a full board with our local delegates and senators, it was a very good conversation, and they walked away, and almost everything that we put out there was picked up and put into play this budget... into play this budget season. And our priorities have been carried through very well. So I really feel the thoughts that we had, the actions that we took are really beneficial to us. And thank you, Dr. Taylor, and thank you, Ms. Boatwright, because as some of the elected folks down in Richmond are saying to me, because I do talk to them, all of us do, but they are very, very appreciative of a quick call to Ms. Boatwright, can you come down here? She says yes, and she's advocating for Stafford down there. So it's a lot of extra work for her to do that, but we definitely appreciate you answering the call. It was a lot of work to put all that writing together, and we appreciate the work that you did on that as well, Dr. Taylor. I also would like to thank Chris and his remarkable team, and remarkable was the word that was used by the auditor, so I have to repeat it. Who, Chris Fulmer, by the way, is one of our homegrows. And just basically, bravo to you guys. Really, really appreciate. That's not a worry that we have to have. And I say that not lightly, when my son's school system in Washington State is not so well done. And because of that, they actually have to close schools because they did not appropriate properly. And they're letting teachers go and increasing class sizes. So yeah, that's not happening here. And I appreciate that. We do have, as Dr. Taylor said, I mean, what we're asking for in salaries, because we prioritize people, it's not to say, again, that we are still on the backside of our budget, is an entire over $60 million menu of things that we need but can't do. And so when we're asked to be careful about what we ask for, we are. And we work, we're very lucky to have a very active Fab C committee that starts things off for us, Dr. Taylor and Chris, all of our work sessions, to help us through this process. So I really do appreciate all that they have done for us. And I'm so super excited about all these weekend events, but I am out of town every weekend since two weeks ago until the end of April, because my kid is playing college lacrosse, and I like to go to all of his games. And I've got two kids with spring breaks, and I'm doing that, too. And he's getting his butt kicked in every game, but it's still fun to go and watch. Thank you. No, I'm asking him not. He gained 50 pounds, and I really feel like the backflip could hurt him at this point. He did his time. He got his moment on TV. He's good. He needs to keep two feet on the ground.
Ms. Healy?
Well, Ms. Randall, I have to disagree with you. You are a joy to work with. Can't say that about myself, but you know what? We all do the best we can. I want to thank everyone who came out to speak. I think it's important that we hear from the community on whatever the community wants to talk about. And starting at the next meeting, you don't have to sign up by 4:00. I think you have to sign up before the meeting starts, but that gives a little extra time for somebody that may have decided to come and wants to speak but didn't have a chance to sign up before 4:00. So I think that's something that we passed tonight, and that will be made very clear on our website. Also wanted to thank the board members. I know we struggle with a lot of these decisions, but I also feel that there's no one on this board that does not have the students and the staff, you know, best interests at heart. And I want to make clear, I think you understand, but I want to be clear, that the reason I did not vote for the budget amendment to just increase it is because I see that as the easy way out. I mean, we're asking for it. We need it. We expect to get it. But it was my desire to show a priority, not to take, not to give away, but I just think it's important. And I trust Dr. Taylor's instincts, and he says we're going to get that extra money. So I want to make sure that we're going to be making that adjustment ASAP when we get it, because I do not expect a friendly response to an increase. We know what happened last year, and we actually didn't even get what Dr. Taylor proposed last year, because at the last minute, we asked for, you know, the pie in the sky, and we got less. So we'll see. I, you know, I'd like to get more. I'd like to do a lot more than we do. But, you know, we have to live within our means, just like, you know, our families. And we see inflation's hitting everything. So, you know, I'd like to see a commitment to not only do Phase 1 this year, but to really reach for Phase 2 next year for the support, because it's unreasonable to keep promising and not, you know, not get things done. So I guess we'll see what happens when we meet next week and present our budget to the supervisors. And I would ask that we be informed sometime before we get to that meeting as to how that presentation is expected to go, whether it be in the superintendent's memo, or, you know, an email or something to the board, because it helps if we're not surprised, you know, as well. Thank you.
Ms. Halsted?
Okay. So I also am going to thank Missy and Angie for all of their hard work, particularly Angie, that every once in a while, I just throw out an email, you know, randomly, unprepared for it. Missy expects it from me now, but poor Angie every once in a while. Or like, I'll call him, and he's like, talk to Angie, and then I talk to Angie, and I'm like, can you talk to him? And, but anyway, thanks to you both. And I hope, Missy, I hope you feel better. I hope you're home sleeping and not watching this. I also want to thank our staff, but also apologize to you at the same time, because we do go back and forth, and I think we do look at stuff as much as we can. And I think it's, sometimes it's moment to moment, just in really looking at it. And it's not an easy decision to make, but that doesn't devalue the work that everybody puts into it. I think all of the effort that you make to give us as much information as you do, both makes our job harder and easier. And that's why we make yours harder and easier when we can. That's just the way it works. So I, you know, I've been thinking a lot about kind of focusing on what to talk about just a little bit in terms of how, what's going on in the county right now. And so I kept trying to find the word that kind of accurately reflects how I feel about the situation. So I came up with three, which is disappointed, frustrated, and surprised. You know, I'm not surprised by people who want to come out and advocate and be passionate about what they believe and what they feel is right for their community. That's 100% on the money, and it's where you should be. But it is stunning to me, the number of times that a question currently has been asked and answered. And because it wasn't answered the way a person wanted it to be answered, it evolved into this loop of accusations and anger and whatnot. There's nothing productive about that. It doesn't change what's happening. But here's the thing. Any attempt to move the land on 19 right now severely compromises this board's ability to negotiate and do anything for you in the future. It sets a dangerous precedent that doesn't allow us to negotiate for you in future decision-making processes. So be very careful what you wish for here, because it has the very real potential to backfire on you. I'm having trouble with the, what I see as the very, very pronounced me-me attitude. We want transparency, but we only want it the way we want it, where we want it, and how we want it. When you actually got transparency, that wasn't enough. The answers weren't enough. I mean, their answers, I don't know how many times, if we were in a courtroom, I'm sure that the lawyer would object and say, asked and answered over and over and over again. The last time I commented, I mentioned the will of the board. I will say this repeatedly, over and over and over again. Any attempt to negate the value of the will of the board hurts the people in this county. There is a reason why that premise exists, and it is to protect your rights and to make sure that we maintain a bargaining position for you and for everyone around you in the future. So I need for us to be very careful about shouting out that this is about digging our heels in. It is about protecting your rights in the future, to negotiate when you need it and for you. So I'm not even going to acknowledge any more accusations about any attempts to undermine this board, how we work together, what we do. We argue when it's necessary. We compromise when we can. We figure each other's needs out. But I want to, I want to take a look at some real facts. When I got on this board, okay, we fought for and got the Hartwood replacement. It was approved. In no time at all, this board informed me that they were not going to move forward with approving that rebuild for me, or my community, because they don't live in Hartwood County. We live in Stafford County. And so I faced a very tough decision, get that school voted down, and return that money and its approval, or focus on what was better for this county. And that was the building of Elementary School 18, to accommodate capacity issues, and to help us move forward. That decision, months it took, I get it for me to understand that. But we are a county. We are not one single community. So I won't speak for Garrisonville, but let's look at what's coming to Stafford County in the coming years. There are 400 homes coming to Centerport Parkway. There are 800 coming to the Westlake property. There is no way any member of this board should ever be held to a promise that a developer makes to the community that it is selling a home to. Their job is to get in, sell the homes as quickly as possible, and get out. They have no investment in the education of our children, and they have no desire to look at or focus on the impact of their decisions. That is the job of this board. That is what we have done, and that is what we will continue to do, to work together. We don't always agree, but we have voted, and that vote has been acknowledged. Your grievances have been acknowledged. They have been heard, and it is time for us to pick up and move on. This county needs it. The budget battle itself is enough for us to have on our plates at one time. Anything else hurts our kids because they see it. It hurts our ability to focus on what this county is actually, should be focused on, I'm sorry, county, school should actually be focused on, which is the future of our children, their academic and educational success, and their ability to perform as adults when they leave our school system. So I'm going to just focus on two last things. The only two answers I could get out of any of the board of supervisors' members, which, by the way, be careful about accusing this board of not speaking to their counterparts, because there are plenty of board members on the other side that won't call us back, won't attend their town hall meetings, and won't answer an email. That is also true. Two answers I got, traffic and roadways. That is actually a slap in the face of the Hartwood representative, because nothing is worse than the traffic and roadways up in the back at Hartwood, that we are now going to have to accommodate 800 homes to. So we're not going to have that conversation anymore. Really, does someone talk about elementary schools and high schools not being on the same property? That's detrimental. Someone should tell Mountain View and Margaret Brunt that. Because actually, Mountain View is one of my better schools, and I would argue it's because there's an elementary school on that property, and because those kids feel obligated to do better for those little kids. Because some of them probably have little kids living at home with them. And so they see the value of being better citizens for them. I really want us to focus on moving forward, but as long as the accusations continue, and as long as the attempts to undermine this board and the decisions it makes moves forward, there's no way to do that. And we are wasting time, effort, and energy that we could be using to focus on our budget, on our academic goals and achievements, and on setting a new plan for this community to be the best school system in Virginia.
Ms. Guy?
Good evening. I know I'm a joy to work with, Ms. Healy. So happy, what is it, School Board Appreciation Week. I'm actually feeling convicted like I'm in church, because I yelled at Dr. Warner. So I just want to apologize, even though she's not here. I used profanity, and that was not nice, even though my feelings were hurt. Okay, so Ms. Hall and Mrs. Mergo, you guys are amazing. And we couldn't do what we do without you. And I'm just very thankful that we have you. And to the rest of staff, you guys are always amazing and always show up. And sometimes we get it wrong, and we need to listen. And, you know, sometimes we get it, we get it right. But I really appreciate your advocating for yourself and your passion, and, you know, making us get it right tonight. So I actually typed out something, and I'm going to read, it's just like this much. It's from, it's for Black History Month, because you know, it's my time of the year, and I love it. And I love history. I'm a history buff, sorta. I hate to say that, and then someone asks me a historical question, and I'm like, I don't know how many states we have. But I do. I love history. And I think, honestly, a lot of us, we're just super ignorant to history, whether it be Black history, or just like civics, or, you know, whatever. Like, we just, we don't know. So I'm named after Maya Angelou. She's amazing. And this is what she says. And like, she's my person I'm spotlighting for Black History Month, like the Daltes did. And it says, "The truth is very important. No matter how negative it is, it is imperative that you learn the whole truth. Not necessarily the facts, because that can come later. The facts sometimes can stand in the front of truth and almost obscure the truth. So it is imperative that students learn the truth of our history, however sad, however terrible, we must all know it. The only way out of something is all the way through it. You must see it, read it, study it, and then you can pass through it." You see, it is imperative that young white men and women study Black American history. It is imperative that Black and white children study Asian American history. I will add, it is imperative that we just study everyone's history. Queer history, Latino history, red girls' history, I love a ginger, you know, redheaded girls. But, you know, just, that's just for me. Okay. I'm sorry, but I agree. You should know that the Asians built these railroads when they were brought here in the 1850s, and then they were unable to legally bring their mates and their families for eight decades. It's important that you know that. Otherwise, how can you make friends? Because only equals can make friends. And I say that because, again, I just, I feel like sometimes our curriculum, with all due respect, is lacking. If I had, if I won the lottery, I would get a degree in Black Studies, because that's like my jam. And I'm just floored at how much of our history, which is your history too. That's why I gave you guys, like, when I gave you our Christmas presents, I had black people on the wrapping paper, because we don't ever really see that. So I just, I just want us to, you know, think outside of ourselves and learn something about someone else's culture. And maybe it can get us to not be so petty up here, like privately, when we're not awesome with each other, and, you know, we don't speak nicely of one another, or call each other back, or whatever. Maybe if we just tried to think outside of ourselves, we can just be a little bit better. But that's it. Happy Black History Month to you guys.
Ms. Lickman, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I don't want to go without us even mentioning these beautiful flowers and gift baskets that we got as well. I just want to say to Dr. Taylor and your staff, thank you guys so much for that thoughtfulness.
I would also like to say thank you to Missy and Angie, and that does not even encompass it. I could not function in this role, especially in our first few years, figuring things out and getting the reminders and reminding us how things are done. I really just appreciate their support. I want to thank Stafford Education Foundation for being here. We are actually direct beneficiaries of some of their products. My child is sitting right there. She's in 7th grade, and she is here observing a board meeting for a badge in her troop, but she participates in Model UN. And after, or during the pandemic, well, I'll back up that our middle school generally, our middle school Model UN programs generally travel to William &amp; Mary to participate in a gigantic Model UN conference. And as a result of the pandemic, there were several years that we didn't have that opportunity because the colleges weren't hosting. And we put one together here locally in Stafford, and Stafford Education Foundation helped with that. And then that expanded to their Best Delegate program, which is online training for any interested student. That made it super, super accessible, especially for these kind of middle-aged kids that are reliant on other people to get places and do things. Having it available virtually was really awesome. And she attended and had a great time. It was live and with other kids. It was great. I usually take notes during a meeting and then compile them into kind of a board member comments. And I struggle to do that now while I'm trying to keep things moving, because I need to stay on task. So I apologize that a lot of my remarks will be somewhat scripted moving forward. Budget season seems to increase tension in our community, and I could never really put my finger on a reason. But this year, I think I've figured it out. While we do not observe- But this year, I think I've figured it out. While we do not observe the custom, this custom at the school board, the Board of Supervisors begins each meeting with an invocation. I don't know if their board does this as a general religious practice, or to just begin each meeting with a reminder of their moral responsibilities to our community in addition to their fiducial, financial. It is with this practice that I realized our Board of Supervisors must fully subscribe to the notion of a 20th century Christian minister. He who holds the purse holds the authority. It is to them that community partners, commissions, boards, including this one, must sing for our supper. Our schools have been on the losing end of many of these performances. As a citizen, I witnessed the school board adding hoop jumping to its dance routine multiple times, particularly when they dared to attempt to address the impact of growth facing our schools. One year, the schools requested their year-end surplus to address unfunded 3R projects, as they normally do. But they were only allowed access to these funds if they spent it on land, to purchase land specifically directed by the Board of Supervisors, and has since been useless to the school boards. But we heard a little bit about what's going on with that land tonight in public comment. Another year, they were told that a future preschool site would not be purchased unless the school board agreed to a countywide elementary school redistricting, the effects of which are still, we are still paying for today. That same year, the Board of Supervisors funded a renovation, not a rebuild, of our county's oldest elementary school, a renovation that has just only recently been deemed substantially complete. This renovation took more than twice as long to complete as building an entire new building. Think of what that must have been like for the students and the teachers. When the Board of Supervisors expressed frustration over going through the budget process with a superintendent who didn't understand the budget, when the need arose, the school board hired a superintendent with an MBA to address the concern. When the school Board of Supervisors expressed frustration that the school board did not have a five-year plan to coordinate with theirs, this board developed a five-year plan, or a budget. When the Board of Supervisors indicated that our budget process lacked transparency, we developed a digital budget book, and we held budget town halls in our district. And those are just the adjustments we've made since I've joined the board. Did these adjustments improve our relationship with the Board of Supervisors? Not at all. In fact, our attempts to meet them where they are seem to have backfired on us. They've attempted to dress down and discredit our staff. They dismiss our five-year budget. They cut our budget, cut the budget we use to hold those community events. They even went so far as to forget to include Stafford County Public Schools in their 10-year strategic plan for our community. But do you know what else they forgot? They forgot that Stafford schools are the hub of our community, that when families move here, often the first people to greet them are the service employees in the front office. They're actually the first people I met in my neighborhood. They forgot to tell that these very same tax-paying families build their lives around school schedules, not only just to get their children back and forth, but so they can be on the sidelines in the auditorium seats cheering the kids on. They seem to forget how so many of our local business owners support our local school division through work-based learning opportunities, donations for fundraisers and student recognitions, offering school and co-curricular programming, hosting spirit nights, and offering discounts to our hard-working employees that help stretch their paycheck just a little bit further. Schools build up our community, and our community builds up our schools. We are better and get better together. So when all is said and done, and those supervisors sit with us on the stage of graduation, I hope that they reflect on whether they have done absolutely everything possible to make that child's journey robust, memorable, and meaningful. Can they say with confidence that their efforts played even a teeny, tiny part in making that student proud to be from Stafford? If the answer is no, I pray that they find a way to change that. Until then, I hope they remember, to quote a favorite superhero, "That with great power comes with great responsibility." And that's it for my comments. Announcements. Presentation of the school board's FY25 local funding request to the Board of Supervisors will take place on February 27 at 4:00 p.m. at the Courthouse Community Center, which is directly across from where we are sitting now. On March 7 at 4:00 p.m., we will have a joint work session with the school board and Board of Supervisors. And then our next regular monthly business meeting will be March 5 with a 5:00 p.m. work session and a 7:00 p.m. business meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.